I call this meeting of the Tacoma City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
President.
Councilmember Barry.
Here.
Councilmember Elrich.
Councilmember Z.
President.
Councilmember White.
Here.
There's a quorum with the council president. I understand that council member Barry is traveling for work and won't be joining us this evening. I assume that council member Elrich will be here shortly. Are there any council comments or announcements? Okay.
And I will most likely be leaving early. I had medical procedure today, and I'm kind of spacey, and I'm here for the beginning, and then I'm going to go home and go to bed.
Okay.
Spacey?
Was that your announcement?
Yes.
Okay, Colleen.
I hope you feel better. I wanted to say that I have been watching the corner of East West Highway and New Hampshire because of a citizen complaint, a couple of citizen complaints, but one principal complaint about the smell that emanates from the trash can that's recently been relocated on the site where there's an eastern Chinese food place, and I think there's a nail place and a check cashing place there. And as I've discussed with you before, the complaint has been about rats and smell, and I've been watching it, and since they were sighted again, it's definitely, the site has been cleaner, but the smell from the trash cans is really terrible. And sometimes you have to get within four feet of the trash cans to smell it, but sometimes I can smell it from 30 feet away. It's really buried, so I could see how the inspector might have really different experiences depending on when they go there, but because I live around the corner from it, I've been able to visit it and check it out kind of almost daily. And I could understand why the person whose property is closest to that would complain. I won't be graphic about the smell, but it's really, really terrible, and I think it would be intolerable if I had to live next to it. If there is any way that we can help them to address this issue, to move it back to where it was at, to get it to the far out corner of the property, to have them build an encased structure for it in some way, find some solution, but I have to say after six weeks of monitoring it, I really have a lot of empathy for the people who live along there.
Okay, are there any other comments? I just wanted to note that I would like to add another agenda item to the end of our council agenda. This has to do with a letter that we received from Larry Giamo, mayor of Rockville. He wants to add a couple of new items, including municipal aggregation, to the agenda of the MML Legislative Conference that several of us are attending later in the week, and I would like to have a discussion of that, so the members who are going to the Legislative Conference will know what the council's thoughts on this are.
I would just like to add a comment, and that is about the Womata Compact hearing, which took place last Wednesday night, and which was very well attended, and many, many people made presentations to the Womata Board members who were there. And I'd especially like to thank my colleagues who all made their appearance as well as their statement, and I think that that in and of itself was a very powerful statement about how strongly this community feels and how firmly we believe we are stakeholders in what happens at the Tacoma Metro site. So, thank you very much, and I will be letting you know about follow-up from that event. The city is looking to organize a walk-through for the Womata Board members because there has been one member appointed recently from Maryland, so it's important for us to keep everyone aware of the issue and make sure that any information that they need to round out their discussion and decision-making about this is available. So, thanks again.
All right. If there's no additional council comments, are there any public comments this evening? I should note that the item on our special session is going to be open for public comments at that time, but if there's any comments on other items on the agenda or items that you wanted to bring before the council now would be the appropriate time.
Andy Kellerman, 18 Philadelphia Avenue, and the issue is storm water management. I was in front of the council, maybe, what, four, six weeks ago, asking if there's anything the city can do about the issue that I'm having with my house where we have a curb cut that directly funnels the water from Philadelphia Avenue into my front yard and into my basement. And at the time, the mayor asked the city manager to look at the issue, because there are a number of other houses in the city who have the same problem. To illuminate the problem, I guess it was two weeks ago when there was a lot of warnings about a major storm coming through, and I called Daryl and asked her if she could ask, you know, have somebody deliver a number of half dozen sandbags, and she said, "No, she can't," because all the sandbags were placed around the library so that the library shouldn't get flooded. So, I asked her if next time she has sandbags, whether I could get some, and she said, "No," because her department is not charged with taking care of private property. So, this is to illuminate, as I said, the issue somewhat further, and I would still like to get a reading from the city or the council as to what I should expect with the storm water management. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Can we, since it's water coming off a public street, it is our responsibility, and probably the permanent fix would be sort of a longer-term issue, but maybe we could address both that longer-term issue and a short-term issue in some form, since we are talking about directing, you know, water on a public right-of-way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Are there any other comments?
We're a group of residents from Willow Avenue. My name is Steve Shapiro, and with me to speak is Denny May, and we briefly want to present two petitions to the council on speed bumps on Willow Avenue. I'll be very brief. We are told that the speed bumps on Willow Avenue were the first ever in Montgomery County, and there's no sentimentality in terms of the historic value of these speed bumps, but the blunt truth is that before they were put in under Sam Abbott's time as mayor, police were clocking cars doing 45 miles an hour, fairly narrow, long street. As it is, the speed bumps are of a different design than are the standard speed bumps that the city has, and there are two speed bumps. After the second one descending the hill, I would suspect if there's radar out there, they would still clock many cars doing 40 miles an hour. Our understanding is that the city has a uniform policy and really would not want to get involved in specifics of this block versus that block in terms of speed bump size. The appeal to the council is that while the policy on speed bumps is well-intentioned, our city, the conditions in our city are not uniform, and the traffic and the needs of streets are also not uniform. It's an appeal to the city council to do the right thing, in our view, and replace the speed bumps that are existing now with those of the same size. We're not asking for higher, but the ones that the city has as its standard policy for replacing are of a lower profile, and candidly speaking, they do allow cars to travel at a speed faster than the posted required limit.
Yeah, hi. My name is Denny May. I live on Willow, next to Steve, and I would just like to add to that, I probably spend more time on the street, standing on the street, as much time as anybody in town. I'm a parent of two athletic kids, and maybe you all don't like that, but we do play a lot. My daughter was a captain of the frisbee team at Blair, my son plays soccer and baseball, and we've spent many hundreds of hours on the street throwing ball back and forth with the frisbee back and forth, and I really know the street very well. What I've observed in the last couple of months is that Willow is becoming more of an alternative to Maple, because Maple is very difficult for a lot of cars to go up and down now because of the speed bumps, and we're seeing more traffic on Willow, and we're worried that if the new speed bumps that the city seems to be putting in other places come into Willow, Willow will become a racetrack. We have, we've seen, we see lots of speeding in that lower section of Willow, and one of the things we're requesting is an additional speed bump placed on the lower end. We would really like to have the speed bumps replaced with the same size as the ones now because they work. The block is very strongly in support of this, and we think it will really make Willow, let Willow continue to be a safe street to live on. We've got three young kids on the lower end who will be, you know, around as traffic passes through, and we would really ask you to give strong consideration to keeping the historic speed bumps that we have now. Thank you very much.
When is Willow due to be resurfaced?
They're doing curb work. They're about finished now, and we expect that the resurfacing will follow when schedules allow.
Is it going to be this fall?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'll give the petitions to Barb, but let me say that our count is there are 41 houses from top to bottom, three houses we have not been able to find the people at home, but of the 41 houses, 33 signed the petition to date to replace the bumps with the existing dimensions, and 34 people signed the petition in support of the additional bump. Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Harvey Solomon of 7316 Piney Branch Road. Six months ago, I visited City Hall to inquire about having resident parking implemented on Piney Branch Road. This issue has two parts. The first is the internal city research, of which I cannot comment because I have not seen a copy of the report that we all heard three weeks ago here was imminent, and of which I was promised a copy. The second issue is the manner in which the city has responded to my request. Only Joy Austin Lane, who I contacted recently after five months of waiting, has followed through, and I'd like to thank her personally for her interest, her suggestions, and her diligence. For every other city employee and official I have contacted beginning last April, all I have to show is a litany of unreturned phone calls, stonewalling, block passing, and we're working on it. If there is a word that is the exact opposite of expeditious, it would apply here. If I were a teacher, I would grade the city's performance an F. Five days a week, 52 weeks a year, my neighbors and I continue to wake up to find every spot in front of our houses taken by cars that commuters well know they cannot park on Baltimore, Holly, Maple, Birch, Buffalo, Cedar, et cetera. The closest free all-day parking to the metro, Piney Branch Road, that's us. Every weekday, I continue to inch my car out of my driveway onto this very busy through street and try to see around the parked cars, SUVs, vans, and trucks that impair and sometimes completely obscure my vision to oncoming traffic. So, I come here tonight with three requests, which I'll also leave, which I will also leave you in writing. First, I would like a copy of the city's report and all relevant public documents, including all comments solicited from Piney Branch residents, in a letter that the city clerk sent dated May 25, 2006, five months ago. I'd like these materials sent certified mail or hand-delivered to my house within the next 24 hours. Second, I'd like a refund of the $20 I paid for resident parking, since I now understand from Joy that the city has ruled that the police documents that showed our block as a residential parking area were wrong. I'd like this refund sent within five business days. Third, on behalf of the residents of 7310 to 7318 Piney Branch Road, the houses closest to the metro, and all of whose owners have signed this petition, I ask that the council vote tonight to put up simple signs like these. Two-hour parking, 8 to 5 p.m., Monday through Friday. This is not resident parking, but a stop-gap measure that would help close the Piney Branch loophole before we begin the permitting process. With these signs and police patrolling regularly and issuing tickets, it would then begin to give us the same rights that every Tacoma Park resident on every street in a four-to-six block radius has and has had for many years. Nothing can erase the last six months, during which I made 30 to 40 phone calls and five visits to town meetings, town hall, including two meetings here. To say that this has been an incredibly frustrating and to date fruitless experience would be putting it mildly, but I don't want apologies. I'd like action. I don't want more platitudes and promises and patronizing. I'd like performance. My parents didn't raise me to be a quitter, so I humbly ask that the council do tonight what the city bureaucracy has been unable to do for the last six months. Please act. Thank you.
Mr. Solomon, as I said when we met and talked, this is an issue of city law. Right now, the city law does not permit us to restrict parking to two hours or any other way on Piney Branch. We would need to change the law in order to permit parking there. I don't have a problem with changing the law, but the council doesn't have the legal authority to restrict parking on Piney Branch under the existing law.
Begging your pardon, you're telling me that now for the first time. The last time I heard, three weeks ago, there was a report in the works, as I say, no one has sent me that report.
Well, we-
But you're telling me now, I'm hearing for the first time.
Mayor Porter, if I might.
I did tell you that when we met.
I'd appreciate if this could be an agenda item in the very near future so that-
I would be happy to do that.
-we can give that feedback to the residents about when this will be dealt with at the council level, and if possible, if the city manager would be able to share that report with Mr. Solomon immediately, that would be appreciated. The, I'm sure the refund is also something that's following, but the one thing that I did want to add to what Mr. Solomon has said is that I believe this problem has recently gotten worse, and the reason is, on the DC side, they have done an assessment of the parking issues in the neighborhood near the metro, and it was part of the joint transportation study that we participated in. So, at that time, they assessed that the parking on Piney Branch, right under the overpass, was heavily utilized by commuters, and they wanted to make sure that area stayed safe and well-maintained, and so they put up parking meters and are getting revenue for the commuters who live there. So, my guess is that pushed the people who are looking for free parking a little bit more in our direction, and I couldn't give you the date when that change took place, but I do know that it has been within the past year or two. So, it makes sense to me that this problem has been exacerbated and that we need to deal with this now.
I think that is the appropriate thing, and I've got it on the list of things that we're going to bring up in the future, and I'd be happy to let you know as soon as we can get it scheduled.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Rena, did you have something at the public comment? You guys are going to have to work this out.
Just to, Rena Agugetti, 7213 Central Avenue, just to follow, if I understand the issue correctly, it's both safety and parking, access to parking lots? If that's the case, the city in its charter does have the ability to restrict parking within five feet, as I understand it, of either side of the driveway. As a matter of fact, that was done in several neighborhoods.
This is actually restricting parking on the entire block.
Okay.
But you are correct, yes, you do. Yes.
My name is Mark Hessel. I'm here to comment briefly tonight on the affordable housing issues, which we're going to be discussing in an hour or more. The affordable housing policy that was distributed seems to miss a lot of big issues, and I think the council really ought to look at that. The long-term discussion says it's for a three-to-five-year time horizon. That's nothing. City council ought to be asking, where's Tacoma Park going to be 10, 20, 30 years from now? There's, I think about 300 units that have been converted to condo according to the chart attached to this. If that proceeds for 20 years, you're not going to have anything left. I think the city, and I mean this sincerely, is doing a good job working with nonprofits to maintain affordable housing in many properties that would otherwise have been sold and may be converted to condo, maybe not, but what's Tacoma Park going to look like 20, 30 years from now? Is it going to be all condos and rental properties owned by nonprofits, and is that a good thing or not? These are big issues that I really think the council needs to address. There's discussion in here about programs to help people buy homes, and I think that's excellent, but you'll note they're not able to buy them in Tacoma Park for the most part, I suspect. Where is the housing in Tacoma Park for people making $60,000 to $100,000 a year, households making that kind of income? There's a mention in here that you need to have at least $100,000 income to buy a $300,000 or $400,000 house. That is very steep. I fully appreciate that, but what's Tacoma Park doing for that middle group? These are issues that I would expect a well-reasoned, and not just well-reasoned, I'm not saying this isn't, but a comprehensive affordable housing policy to be addressing. I know some of the county council members have talked in recent years about not just traditional affordable housing at the low end of the scale, but workforce housing, and I think perhaps the council ought to be looking at that, too. A household with two people making $40,000 a year, where's their place in Tacoma Park, particularly if they want to own something? They're not probably going to be able to afford a single-family home. Can they afford a condo, or is it just no options for them in the city? The plan also doesn't seem to address what the cost is of affordable housing to Tacoma Park, the city, and to the people who finance it. A large part of it is rent stabilization that falls on the landlord's shoulders. How can you do an affordable housing plan that doesn't even address, or plan or program or discussion that doesn't even address what it costs? Moving on from that, I know my time's limited. There is another agenda item, which is a batch of proposals for changes to the existing housing code, and the specific, there are no specific proposals in there. I was looking at this lengthy copy of the code and realized that the changes aren't in there, they're not written down anywhere, they're just kind of described briefly up front. I'll reserve comments on most of it, but one is a technical matter. There's a reference to allowing treble damages when somebody illegally charges a rent. It is quite easy, I've had a number of clients who have done this, quite easy to get confused in Tacoma Park about exactly what you're allowed to do with rent control, and some people, well-intentioned, have stepped over the line. If you're allowing treble damages, generally in Maryland, the Rohrbach case, that is- If you're allowing treble damages, generally in Maryland, the Rohrbach case, that is viewed as punitive damages, and judges will not give them unless there's some evidence of malice. You might want to spell that out when you actually come out with a specific proposal. I anticipate that I'll be here whenever that comes before you, and I'll make comments on it at that time also. But just wanted to throw out those comments on the affordable housing plan and whatever's being proposed for code revision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Sabrina Barron. I'm the president of Historic Tacoma, and I also just wanted to follow up with thanks about the strong stance and strong showing that the city council has made on the issue of maintaining our transit facilities at the Tacoma Metro Station. I encourage you to stand firm in that stance and to disseminate your position to as many politicians in Maryland who are relevant to the issue in the District of Columbia as possible. I'm glad to hear that you're planning on some meetings with the Womata Board, and I look forward to hearing more about that. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I sent an email to some of you about conversations I had had with a couple of merchants in Old Town, expressing their concerns about the schedule for upcoming street reconstruction and how that might impact their holiday shopping season. And some of you should recall that this came up last year when you were proposing to redo the Laurel Avenue median and so forth, and at that point in time, the concerns of the merchants were heard and acted upon, and I hope you will, I hope you will take that into consideration. October and November are very important shopping seasons, and a lot of the merchants make 50% of their yearly take in the Christmas shopping season, and in fact, I've been told by one merchant that the Christmas shopping season is more than 50% of her annual income. So I do hope you'll take that under consideration as to what's good for our merchants in Old Town. I wanted to mention a couple of other things as well as I could. I see you have another subdivision of a lot on your agenda this evening, and it seems like we're seeing more and more of these. And my organization has a lot of concerns about mansionization and lot coverage, these kinds of issues, and if you just want to take a stroll down Ethan Allen, it's very instructive as to the do's and don'ts of renovation and lot coverage. And I would encourage you to take the stance that you have traditionally taken, which is not to take a stance on these subdivision, on these subdivision issues. And I think we need to be more and more aware of this as time goes on and real estate prices continue to climb. The other thing I wanted to address is the wayfinding signage system, which is also on your agenda this evening. And I'm looking at this, and I noticed that one of the proposed groups of signs to be installed is tertiary gateway signs denoting the historic district, but unless I'm missing something, none of the locations shown on the map have anything to do with the historic district. And I would also like to request that my organization, which provides stewardship for the historic district, be consulted about this. Yes, we've had discussions in the past, but this is the first we've heard of this project for a while, and we would appreciate being consulted about where these signs for the historic district are going to be located. And I'd also like to see some clarification, since it looks to me like none of these are anywhere near the historic district. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. In terms of the merchants, we have had some discussion with staff, and it's certainly not the council's intention to have something that's very disruptive during the holiday shopping season. I think we can, this is supposed to be finished fairly quickly, and also, it's not supposed to be as disruptive as the Laurel Avenue median, but we'll continue to keep on top of it, and I appreciate your concerns. Anyone else?
I have a question, not a comment. Tom Gagliarda, in the event that the council vacancy is created by Mark Elrich's election to the county council, what is the procedure for filling the seat?
It's basically a special election, and it would, Jesse, do you want to talk a little bit about the timing? It's basically within no more than 45 and no, no less than 45 and no more than 60 days following the vacancy.
And there's, there's no limit on when there's an election versus appointment by the city council, by the remaining members of the council?
The appointments, the appointments basically only take place if the vacancy occurs within six months, I believe, of the next election.
All right, so it's not a factor in this particular, it's not likely to be a factor?
No, it won't be. I mean, in order to take office as a county council member, Councilmember Elrich would have to resign his seat as a Tacoma Park council member.
Final question. I assume this will, will this be announced in the city newsletter and elsewhere?
Yes. We don't, we don't want to jump the gun here and make assumptions either about, you know, what the course of the election is or when Councilmember Elrich would choose to vacate his seat.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, we will move on to the next item, which is the city manager's comments.
With the council's concurrence, I would suggest this matter be deferred till later in the meeting. There's obviously a significant number of individuals here for the regular meeting items.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate that. We have a couple of interviews, and I put them at the beginning of the agenda because I understand one of our interviewees has a small child at home and cannot be gone that long, so we don't, certainly want to put your child in the position of whoever you've asked, why don't you just come up here, whoever's taking care of your child, that they end up sitting there much longer than you've promised them.
Thank you.
Now, you are applying for a reappointment to the Committee on the Environment.
Yes.
And you've been on the Committee on the Environment, remind me how long?
One year.
One year, okay. Is there anything you'd like to talk to us about, about your service on the Committee on the Environment?
Just last year, I have been taking the minutes for the committee. I was involved in the comments that we presented to council on the developments on New Hampshire Avenue and also on the DC Comprehensive Plan, and I was also involved in preparing materials for the Rain Barrel Workshop that we hosted in the spring.
A very, a very useful thing for the committee to have, now that they're a formal committee and have to be under the open meetings law. Are there any questions from other members of the council? Just want to let you know how much we appreciate your willingness to continue on, and I'm sure the committee appreciates it also, and I don't see any other questions, so thank you very much. We'll be doing the reappointments, I believe we've got some scheduled next week.
Okay.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. I'm sorry.
I just have a question for the clerk.
Clerk, question for the clerk.
I see there's another expired term. Do we know what's happening with that person?
I have a tentative interview date yet, I don't have confirmation at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and Gail Fisher-Stewart, who has been on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee for a number of years and has been the person who is responsible for a number of the very important things that the committee's done.
Thank you.
Welcome, we appreciate your willingness to apply for reappointment.
Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, just a couple of initiatives. We've been successful in working with University of Maryland, University of College, Department of Criminal Justice, where I teach, and working with the police department to get a co-op position through the university to assist the police department in working with their GIS program. And we're also looking at different recruiting strategies that will assist in creating brand loyalty for this police department, looking at working with high schools and working with that between-time, between-time of graduation and when you can legally become a police officer, looking at some different.
When you say brand loyalty, you mean people interesting, interested, who are people who are interested in becoming a police officer, wanting to apply to our police department?
Right, we have to create that brand loyalty early on. You know, when they get 21, it's kind of late because everybody else is grabbing them. So if we think we start during the high school and right after high school, where they come and work with the police department, when they become 21, they'll want to stay here with the police department. We're also looking at different volunteer programs to assist the police in freeing up some of the police in their duties, and so we want to present recommendations to Barbara, to the council, looking at those three areas in the very near future.
That certainly sounds like a lot of good things to be doing, I appreciate that. Are there any other comments? Yes, Terry, any comments?
Yes, I'm curious on how the committee works. You've mentioned a couple of things tonight that we were unaware of, and of course, you know, the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee is an advisory committee to the council, and I just wondered where these ideas come from. Do they come from staff, or do they come from the committee itself?
The ones I've mentioned came from the committee.
And do you work closely with the staff, or how does that?
Very closely with the police department, with Barbara, so there's, you know, constant communication. We'd like more interaction, anything that the city manager or this department would like for us to do, we are willing to, you know, to do that.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just, you know, we've talked about kind of standardizing the committees and some of the procedures, and I think discussion on that would be helpful when that gets on the agenda.
Why don't you send a note to Jesse? We're pulling together a list of items that would be under our committee's discussion, our discussion on city committees, and people give them to me, and either I give them to Jesse or I don't remember them, so why don't you send them directly to Jesse?
Okay, thank you. And thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that the few times I sat in on the committee, I thought you had great contributions, I'm so happy that you're upping for another term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming, we very much appreciate it. We're going to do both of those appointments, I believe, next week, so thank you for coming and thank you for being willing to continue.
Thank you.
We are now moving on to our next agenda item. We have one item under our special session this evening, which is a resolution expressing support for Columbia Union College remaining in Tacoma Park. I'd like to just say a couple of words about why I'm putting this resolution before the council, and then I'd like to give Dr. Wisby and Elder Wiggley opportunity to speak, and then I will put the resolution before the council and ask to have it moved and seconded. Then, of course, the council can make whatever comments it wants, and then the public can make whatever comments they want. But I would like to say, first of all, that I very much appreciate Elder Wiggley, who is the chairman of the Board of Trustees of Columbia Union College, being with us here this evening. He changed his schedule and came back into town early so he could be with us, and I do very much appreciate it, and I consider that a very positive gesture in terms of working with the city. I also wanted to say that there is on the college's website some information that explains this process and the proposals that they're considering, and that specifically asks for public comment, and that in the spirit of that request, I'm putting this resolution before the council to say to the college that we do value them as an important member of our community, and we are very concerned about any process that would take them out of the city, and so that's the concern that we have and what we would like to express. And I would like to see if Dr. Wisby, do you have any further comments you'd like to make?
I'll second the resolution.
Well.
Didn't you say you're putting it forward?
I'll put it forward, and then you can second it, yes. Yes.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to the council. Certainly, as president of Columbia Union College, I want to express our gratitude to each member of the council, and in particular to you, Mayor Porter. Mayor Porter has consistently gone out of her way to find opportunities to support the students, faculty, and staff of our college, and she is always adamant about our place in the community. And I have been deeply encouraged by your many ways in which you involve yourself in our student body, as well as with our faculty and staff, so thank you, Mayor Porter. On behalf of our learning community, I also want to express our gratitude in your stated desire to reach out to us as identified by the council's intent to put forward this official resolution noting our role in the community. As you may be aware, CUC has been blessed to serve our Tacoma Park community since 1904. In many ways, our city and college have grown up together. During the recent decades, the college has experienced many wonderful moments in which we, as a learning community, have embraced our mission to prepare young men and women for lives of service and commitment. I have truly enjoyed my six years as president of the college, especially as I have watched our students work with our local Tacoma Park citizens on our annual service day, and our sponsorship of events with you, such as the Tacoma Park Folk Festival, the Jazz Festival, the Street Festival, the Film Festival, and even the Taste of Tacoma Park, which began as a student-led initiative on our campus and which you have so graciously supported. CUC also gladly serves as a voting precinct for our neighborhood, as a safe gathering place for students from local schools in case of an emergency, and we are happy to provide access to our library, our athletic facilities, our conference rooms, and even our delicious vegetarian dining hall. We value the opportunity as well to add to the park-like setting of Tacoma Park with our large green spaces and with our playing fields. These years, however, have also been challenging for the college, as we too, like our city, have faced the reality of buildings that need significant renewal, the need to keep our education affordable for our students at a time when the costs to provide this education are escalating, and the dramatic need for new facilities that promote learning among today's students. And I have appreciated so very much the council, as well as the city's encouragement in our processes that have guided us in the hope that we will one day see new buildings on the campus. The history of the commission, you are aware of it, on our campus, the CUC Study Commission, and you can find that information in this packet that you have provided this evening, as well, as you've already noted, on our website, and I believe as well on the city Tacoma Park website. It is important, I believe, to note that this study commission was put into existence at the request of the College Board of Trustees of Columbia Union College. The commission was asked to study the issues facing the college, and in particular, some of the financial realities facing the college, and to recommend ways in which the college could continue to be financially and academically vibrant for the future. During the September 20 board meeting, members of the commission presented two options for board consideration. One option retains the current liberal arts and graduate studies format, but aggressively attempts to address the debt, maintenance needs, and endowment requirements the college currently faces. The other option proposes that the college adopt a health science and professional studies program under Administ Healthcare. It should be noted very clearly that the commission invited Administ Healthcare, our longtime partner, to develop this proposal, which they graciously consented to do. The board voted to study at that meeting the two proposals presented by the commission, and agreed to study a third option that would combine the best of both, and that will be brought forward this Wednesday at our upcoming CUC board meeting. We have been in the process this past month of attempting to listen very carefully to all of our constituencies, our students, faculty and staff, certainly our alumni, our neighbors, and we're very interested this evening in hearing the comments of our fellow community members. And so we thank you for your desire to offer your support. I do believe that in the coming weeks, that certainly we look forward to speaking with you, Mayor Porter, and your staff, as to significant ways in which the city of Tacoma Park can indeed support Columbia Union College with our mission. I'm very pleased, as you've already identified, that this evening Elder David Wiggley, our Columbia Union College Chairman of the Board, is with us. It should be noted that David is an alumnus of Columbia Union College. He did study with us 36 years ago, and most recently, for the past four years, has served as a trustee as he carried out his responsibilities for administration for the church in the Maryland, Virginia, and District of Columbia area. He now serves as president of the Columbia Union Conference of Citizens Day Adventists, which cares for all of the states of the mid-Atlantic region, and like you, Mayor Porter. which cares for all of the states of the mid-Atlantic region, and like you, Mayor Porter, I too am very pleased that, uh, he could be with us this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Wisby, and good evening, City Council. Mayor Porter, thank you for this opportunity, as Dr. Wisby has already shared our desired interest to hear the community. Um, Tacoma Park is a special community to me, uh, as Dr. Wisby shared, thirty-six years, thirty-six years ago, I was a student at Columbia Union College, but, uh, closer to home to this building right here, I sang in a choir at the, uh, Tacoma Park Seventh-day Adventist Church, in the direction of Francisco de Arugio, and as you all know, uh, in just a matter of, uh, a couple of weeks, a month or so, uh, two months, I think it is, uh, December 16th, they're gonna have a wonderful Christmas pageant right there at that church. And, um, so it's good to come back to Tacoma Park, it's good to come back and see some of the, um, the values that I saw here expressed thirty-six years ago, uh, are still being expressed. Uh, just had a delicious meal in one of your restaurants, I won't say which one for fear I might offend somebody else, but, uh, it was just good to be here tonight and be able to, um, be a part of the ambiance. And thank you for bringing me back early, I was in Chicago and I was tired of the clouds, and so it was nice to come back to see some sunshine. But, um, we value very much, uh, the community voice, and when we meet together on Wednesday, we are evaluating these proposals, these are proposals, and, um, we can get pretty excited about, uh, these proposals and look at different strengths and weaknesses, and it's easy for our emotions to run, and even the Board of Trustees, they're gonna have some pretty strong emotions about both these proposals, as you can imagine, as even the city would have, and surely we should have, because we care, we all care, we care deeply about, um, the students within we are entrusted with, we care about, um, the excellence that we are committed to, the program of sharing, uh, Christian education in this community, and I must say Columbia Union College has always had, at the forefront, a desire to, committed to sharing a excellent Christian education program for, uh, the students, for this college, for the community. But we're here tonight to listen, and so with that just brief statement, I'm going to sit down and hear the concerns that, uh, the city may have, if you want to express further, City Council or other guests who are here tonight, invitees. Uh, as Dr. Wisby said, we wanted to be able to share with the Board of Trustees what our stakeholders are saying, stakeholders such as the students, the faculty, uh, the community, and of course, uh, some of the major stakeholders when it comes to the Seventh-day Adventist Church, which placed that school there a hundred and two years ago. We are committed to having a school of excellence, of higher education in this area, and so we are truly interested in hearing what you have to say. Thank you very much for reaching out to us, we appreciate this very much.
Well, thank you. Um, the resolution has been moved and seconded, and as is our custom, um, I'll offer council members the opportunity to speak to the resolution if they like. Bruce?
I would just like to say that my understanding of this issue and my desire for what might happen is, my, my desire is fairly simple. Any curriculum choices that you make, I think are yours internally to make, but I would like to see whatever you might decide to do, uh, keep you in this community. I think you go back to the, almost to the beginning of the community, you're, you're a tie to, uh, the Adventist beginnings in this community, and I would hate to see any decision that you made take you out of the community, and it would be doubly hard to deal with if that also assisted Washington Adventist Hospital in leaving the community. I think both institutions provide valuable services to the residents of this area, and I'd like for you to do everything you can to decide to stay and grow here, and for us to assist you in any way we can.
I'd like to also, um, let you know how much we, as a city and a council, uh, appreciate your presence in, in our community, and, um, some of the ways that I've seen you be an excellent neighbor are, uh, by your participation in the, the Film Festival, which is now five years old, and I see David Miller is here, and Wendy Ripley, another talented faculty member of yours, has been very involved in getting that launched and making it continue. Uh, the, um, the Taste of Tacoma is also another unique contribution you've made, and for our community, which is, uh, as you know, small and, and, you know, limited resource, we depend on everyone bringing their gifts and their ideas, uh, together and with the volunteer, um, spirit, making things happen that really you couldn't even pay a government to do. Uh, they, they wouldn't come out the same, they wouldn't convey the, the sentiments of the community the same way they do when they are done at the grassroots level and, and brought forward by volunteers, so thank you for, um, allowing your students and your faculty to, um, foster that community spirit and highlight what makes our, um, town unique and, um, and special to us. I can understand that the connection with the hospital, uh, is a very, um, intense one, and with the hospital, uh, having discussions about moving, that it does call into question what you would do with certain programs, and I agree with Councilmember Williams that curriculum is really your, uh, your jurisdiction, but, uh, what we would like you to know is that, uh, the, the history of our community is, um, integral, uh, to having Columbia Union College here, and, uh, I, I really can't imagine what, um, the community would look like without your liberal arts institution there, the only four-year institution in our border, um, and I don't want you to leave, so I hope that we can find a way that you are, um, accommodated in, uh, in terms of the, the needs of your institution, but also, uh, reassured that, um, your presence here is, um, critical, and I hope, uh, that the, the coming weeks and months and years will, um, will, uh, will go smoothly and, and work to your advantage as well as to the community's.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Um, yeah, I believe it's the only four-year college within Montgomery County, isn't it? Uh, yeah, so it's, uh, that it in itself is remarkable. Uh, you know, Columbia Union College, as far as I'm concerned, is, uh, a member of the community, and that makes you a member of our family, and as such, we certainly, I, uh, wanna see you, uh, successful and, and, uh, achieve the, the most that you can, but also I don't wanna see you leave home. Uh, I want you to stay here in the community so that we can succeed together. Uh, you know, I was totally shocked and disappointed when I heard about the hospital's plans to relocate outside of Tacoma Park. My constituents, uh, are equally, uh, concerned about the, uh, moving of the hospital from Tacoma Park, um, to an area outside, they're concerned about what that means to them personally and to their healthcare. Uh, they're all con, also concerned what it means, uh, to us as a city, uh, with the hospital moving, and I think, uh, you know, as I hear your plans for your, uh, possible plans or the considerations you're making for your curriculum, it's kind of exciting, you know, it's, uh, a lot of good ideas, but, uh, we would like to think that, that those plans are working towards, uh, something that would build you bigger and stronger here within Tacoma Park, and also, um, maybe something that, that, uh, keeps, uh, healthcare component here in Tacoma Park, uh, if the hospital does decide to, to move outside, and maybe, maybe the plans that you're making, um, you know, if you're making those in conjunction with, uh, Adventist Healthcare and the hospital itself, uh, could be looking at how you can, uh, work with the hospital to keep the campus here, and, and so I would encourage you as, uh, as a family member to, uh, to let us know what we can do, um, to, uh, to keep you at home and to, and to build you bigger and stronger, uh, and build us bigger and stronger here in the community, in Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, when I was in college in California, I was the student body president in my college, and so one of the jobs that I had was to be, um, our, our state representative at a time when our state was, was raising fees because we couldn't afford to keep the colleges going, we couldn't afford to keep the instruction going, and we were facing years of deferred maintenance, so, you know, I understand how the maintenance and the instruction choices come along, and I was also on our foundation board of directors at a time when we were trying to decide what programs we were gonna provide our boosted funding to, which was gonna have an impact on the curriculum choices, and, and frequently, there was a great deal of pressure to push into the professional programs, um, one of which was a psych tech program, we had a nursing program, we had a recording arts program, and they were really successful at drawing students. So I think I have a pretty deep understanding of the choices that you're facing and the economic dynamics, and, um, from my student's perspective at that time, and being a representative to the state, I, I, I recognized, not in me personally, but in the people, the, the other students that I worked with, what a huge impact even small fee increases had on people's, sometimes their perceived access to education, because I'm not sure that, you know, there wasn't a way to, to pay for it, um, but it really changes people's perceptions about barriers to education, so, you know, I really understand that. Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't dare to, to suggest anything about a direction that your college should take, um, that, that as the other councils members have expressed is, is really your decision, but I, I want you to know that everybody that I talk to in the community, in my ward, as, as well as in the broader community, is very appreciative of the college, and very supportive of the college, and loves having the college as a neighbor, not only because they like the idea of having the college in town, but because they find the college to be a really good neighbor, and I think that you will find that, that the whole, the broader community of Tacoma Park is going to be willing to do what it takes to, to help you stay here, if that's, if that's in the realm of possibilities. Whether you, you, you do so by changing your business model, or by keeping your business model the same, you'll find that there will be, there'll be a lot of support in this community, and like the other council people, and I think like the broader community, I hope, I do hope that you will, you will choose to stay in Tacoma Park and in your home.
Okay, um, is there any public comment on this resolution? Um, I would ask people, um, as we usually do, to identify themselves when they come up to speak, and also since I assume there are a number of people who want to speak, if you could keep your comments brief. Thank you. You know?
Reno, Obrigetti, seventy-two thirteen Central Avenue. First, let me say that, uh, I appreciate you taking those seats out, it's kind of like flying in JetBlue with the, uh, leg space. This, uh, this issue has been, uh, really, uh, an inter, to me, a, a really interesting issue in civics. The issue began, at least as far as I'm aware, five months ago, and proceeded along a relatively predictable course. Uh, the council was, was notified in April and May that a commission, during public sessions, that a commission, uh, was being established, and profoundly ignored that. Um, now, we look at a resolution that, uh, is coming into play forty-eight hours before, I believe roughly forty-eight hours before, uh, and a very important institutional vote, um, that can be looked at through a variety of lenses, it can be looked at through the lens of, um, the, the Adventist Health Services, uh, institution, it can be looked at through the lens of, uh, Columbia Union College, it can be looked at through the lens of the citizens of Tacoma Park, and, and that's all that I can really speak to. And I think that really we're here tonight thanks to, um, the, really, the diligence of two Gazette reporters who, uh, who really put this issue in front of you. If, if that didn't happen, I don't think we'd be here, and that would be a shame, because when you look at it from the citizen's perspective, this is a land use issue. So what happened here? I, you know, I've really been thinking about this for a long time, I, I have, you know, I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to, uh, at least one of the council members, and my impression is that, that, um, there is a sense that having open discourse and communication is frightening, because it, it, it could make people feel bad. The reality is that what we're talking about is public discourse, so I wanna kind of take you back some years to, you know, to some of the conversations. Karen Love, uh, who is my children's, the late Karen Love, who is my children's godmother, and Beth Habada, who is sitting back there and is a, uh, Columbia Union College alumnus, former chair, I believe, of the, the Alumni Association, or you are former city administrator. Um, Elders Zork and Thurber, and I, and several other, uh, folks in the community at the time, uh, in nineteen, I think it was around nineteen eighty, put together a series of fireside chats, because at the time there were institutional problems going on after all, whether it be an Adventist institution, a Catholic institution, a Jewish institution, big institutions have impact, they have land impact, they have hiring impact, and the city and the citizens were bumping up against each other. And so what we did was we had an incredible solution, we put together a situation where people could talk. I can't tell you how much I have felt in this process, that it has been like pulling teeth to get this council to pay attention to this issue. It has been a shame, because it has struck me over the years, that, that when we look at the institutions that we have in Tacoma Park, a hospital, well, we've had problems with the hospital, Mark, you know that, I know that, there have been issues, but there've also been good things, there have been the fact that that's where my father got his bypass surgery, there have been important reasons to keep this community, and I watched and I walked out of a meeting that a couple of, I think the mayor and, I think, I'm not sure whether you were in the, in the room, Mark, but we had a former council member shouting to, to, uh, stop the president of the college from speaking. I mean, what a remarkable situation we've come to. Marie Rixah, who's sitting back there, and I, put together a meeting, uh, which brought, brought together, uh, council member Perez, right after he was elected, and, uh, the president, then-president of the college, and several other folks from that institution, we talked through some issues, I mean, we came to a conclusion that there was an irresolvable issue there. Transport, or the, the, uh, the transportation, those roads just don't bear the amount of people that we could have within that college, but nevertheless, it's an important conversation to have, not, not in the sense of, uh, you know, backroom comm, I don't, it's a bad word, it's not what I mean, that the conversation should be limited to a few. We all live together and we are all neighbors. Things that come as surprises destroy relationships, they destroy relationships, that is what we are faced with in these situations, and that is what is wrong, and is resolvable and it needs your leadership. It needs your leadership, not you having a meeting, you know, in, in a, uh, in a president's office someplace, but it's in effect creating, recreating something of those fireside chats. People beginning to understand who each other are, not as straw people. From my perspective, this is a land use issue. I believe that, um, that there are assets in this community that an intelligent hospital and an intelligent col, college could make use of. When I moved to this city thirty years ago, there were no politicians who lived in Tacoma Park. Think of what's available today, think about the leverage that this city has with the people who live in this city. We are not a negative, we are an asset. The problem is when people do not communicate with each other, when people are surprised, and you have brought this issue to a point of surprise when it could have been a point of discussion five and six months ago. So you asked me, Kathy, you know, not to, to take off after the, you know, the hospital, uh, not to take off after the college, I'm not taking off after them, I think you guys are the problem. I think that there needs to be more open discussion, this is a little town, we are not New York City, we are not New York City, we are Tacoma Park and we act as if we are a big city too often. People need open discussion. we are a big city too often. People need open discussion. Not to attack each other, to understand each other, and to find common assets. I cannot remember why I have heard the things I have heard about, as I have proposed, a meeting like this. I do not know. But if you think back, I have said over and over again at this podium, that what this city needs to look at is more conversation. That's what I think we need. That's what I think we need. So, it's gonna be a vote in forty-eight hours, and you all sit up there and you say, "Well, you know, we wouldn't presume to do anything, you know, at this point, because it's your territory." Of course not. But five months ago, what could be done to have a conversation about what assets are out there to help, and to bring them to the table? That's what this is about.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Seth Grimes, 7300 Willow Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. And thank you to the college representatives for appearing here tonight. I applaud the council's taking up this resolution. It's certainly very timely, as Mr. Algeretti observed, perhaps it's a bit late. This is a time, as we all know, of great change for the city of Tacoma Park and for the surrounding communities. That would include the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads area, areas of nearby, not so nearby, Prince George's and Montgomery County, Silver Spring, and other, and the institutions that are contained within all of these areas, not only just the governmental institutions like the city of Tacoma Park. We're seeing a lot of change in Montgomery County government with the last election. And for institutions that include Montgomery College, as well as the Columbia Union College. I note that Montgomery College has undertaken a very, very significant financial commitment in expanding its own healthcare, educational, and services facilities. And I bring that up to point out that there are many interlinks and interrelationships among all of the institutions that make up our community, integrated with the surrounding communities. There are interlinks that, in which the development that's occurring here in Tacoma Park, in nearby communities, including the District of Columbia, are affecting. We have a lot of issues that relate to not only development, but the integration of new immigrants into our community, providing them and long-term residents with continued availability of affordable housing. We have elderly populations who are being affected by demographic and economic shifts, including changes to the institutions that serve the communities. We have a lot of healthcare impact in particular there. And for that reason, I personally can't condemn the thought that the college would shift its focus to healthcare, because that could bring assets to the community that the community needs. Again, I'm talking about more than just the city of Tacoma Park. That the community needs in the decades to come. All the same, I will echo what Mr. Algeretti said, that, well, personally, I was caught unaware until I was alerted by email that he sent out by the Gazette articles, and I will also applaud the Gazette reporters who brought to light some of these issues. I was caught unaware, and I do note that some of these issues did become aware, were tipped off to the council as much as five or six months ago. I was caught unaware. And I would just ask the council to consider that unless there's some really pressing need to make a decision very soon, given the very short notice that the city of Tacoma Park, presumably Montgomery County as well, and the community and its residents have been given, that we have a very limited opportunity to present our points of view to you all. And I would ask you not to take any precipitous decisions without due consideration, unless there really is some very, very compelling reason for you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tom Gagliardo. I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of stand this way, because--
Can you, you're gonna do that, can you move the microphone around so that the people at home can hear you?
What do I have to do?
Yeah, you swing the microphone itself.
Okay. I don't mean to disrupt the whole raffle card here, just part of that.
As you--
Where are-- I want to endorse what--
Can you push the microphone over a little bit, so that it's in front of your face?
All right, let me just do it this way.
Gentlemen, excuse me.
Why don't we sit here?
You're welcome to do that.
You see, this is a teaching moment, as the park might say. You know, we started one way, and then somebody had a better idea. And it was in order to meet the needs of both myself and the elder. And that's exactly the kind of thinking that we need to apply. And "we" is everybody in the community of Tacoma Park, everybody in the community of the college, everybody in the community of the Seventh-day Adventist Church and its constituent parks that are part of this decision-making. So, I want to expand on what Reno said, without denigrating anything he said, and quite the opposite, to endorse it. We're here, it's now. We can't change what happened, but we can change what's going to happen. And we need to find the mutual interest. The mutual interest, first of all, the city, the community interest, by and large, and I don't presume to speak for anybody, except myself, but I think that you'll find a lot of people would agree with me, is, as Reno said, a land use issue. For you, it's the viability of the institution, and the health of the institution. Those are not counterposed interests. Those can well be compatible interests. So, the first question I have is, do you want to stay? I'm not asking you to answer now, but I'm asking you to consider this, and I'm asking you to discuss this with the other people who are part of the decision. Do you want to stay? What I hear from many people is, they want the college to stay, they're glad for it to thrive. There are all sorts of benefits directly and indirectly, and there is a great concern that if the college should reinvent itself, to whatever degree, that it will join the hospital in its, in the intent to move. And then, not only will an asset be lost, but we face some very difficult issues about the reuse of that land, those facilities and that land. That's what's motivating the community, excuse me, that's what's motivating me, and I think the community. I think it behooves all of us, council, citizens, you're part of the equation, to sit down and have a real discussion. It's real nice. I'm all for it, to say, "We like you, and you like us." Great. But how does that get us to the next step? How does it meet your interest, our interest? It's hard work. Some, you know, it's gonna take creativity, it's gonna take exactly what happened here. How am I gonna solve this problem? Gee, and you came up with it. You said, "I'll sit over there." Problem solved. Should it be so easy? So, I want to emphasize what the community's concerned about, what we can do about it, and to strongly endorse what Reno is saying, which is, we need to establish a process. Because right now, there is no process. Real nice to come here tonight, real nice to hear myself speak. I'll go watch the replay, and, you know, my ego will jump four points and all that kind of stuff. But it doesn't mean anything if we can't really, together, establish a process, and really start defining the interest, and finding, and defining the options, and picking the best decision that helps you get to where you want to go, and where we want to go too.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak?
Lynn Bradley, 7305 Maple Avenue. I used to live at 8112 Flower Avenue for twenty-two years. I served on the council for Ward Five. And when I first got involved, was very much, you know, I think we had some low points before and after. I hope things kind of sound better, but I'm a little worried that, you know, we're getting rocky again, because I think a lot of folks, both in terms of not only our health needs and our education needs, but a lot of folks in this town really wanted to understand how the institutions were working, how we could better work together, so we didn't have battles like when the sanitarium came down, or over the heliport, or over the closing of the family clinic. And so, when I heard about this, I thought, "Oh, this is just sounding like too familiar," and yet, trying to understand what your institutional needs are. And so, I don't have any answers other than I would like to reiterate the emphasis that we could close, slow things down in terms of the discussions, both in terms of your boards and your institutional decisions, and how the city could relate to that. Because it does force, if you, the worst-case scenario, which to me would be that both the hospital and the college left, and having thought about this, and Mark's been involved in a lot of those things from thirty years ago now, twenty-five anyways--
What is that? Who's Kathy?
When we were children, you know, we were teenage activists at the time, I'm sure. But that this, you know, we would want, even if there was a separation, it was best for your institutions, and the city could somehow, we accommodated this, which I hope will not be the case, but that there needs to be not, as somebody else said, there should be no surprises, and that there's gotta be a way to have this discussion. I see the loss of jobs, I see the loss of healthcare. Having known a number of students and employed them, and matter of fact, I have one of your employees now, or one of my employees is a graduate, and worked at the college as well. And so, to lose that, I think, is losing something that both your institutions invested in, and that certainly the city has invested in. So, I don't have any wise answers. I wish I could say, "Aha, I have it all," but I don't. But I am disturbed that we not go through some of the wrangles that we had to do over the other battles, and that we not surprise each other. You know, I still remember when the sanitarium got knocked down on Christmas Eve Day. And while that's very, very old news, you know, I don't want to see something like that happen again. Furthermore, I am concerned about the institutions leaving, because of what it would do. I think it would totally, if you had the kind of development, and I realize Seth or others reminded me that there are different votes that would be needed to have a denser kind of construction on that property. With due respect to all of our new county council, I would be so afraid. I've never heard of the college being, or any of the other hospitals, for that matter, having any substantial turn down or turn away on any exceptions on any property like that. So, I'd be very concerned that there be some more vision about what's going to happen that helps us all, and not just sort of piecemeal decisions. One additional thing, when you talk about development or changes at that, in that neighborhood, and you look at the metro development, or anything else that goes on in town, these things, and I think I have said this before, they've got to be looked at together. Because if you had all that metro development go on, and you had the kind of potential mass development you could have on all of that property, we would not be able to even cross town in a car. It'd be like, you know, K Street at 5:15 in the afternoon. So, I would ask that we slow it down and be able to have, you know, a more reasoned discussion with both economic and, you know, other kinds of land use discussions involved.
Thank you. Does anyone else that wants to speak?
Bev Habada, former city manager, and recently, the immediate past president of Alumni Association for Columbia Union College. I have a dual role here, in that I used to sit up there and understand the public policy implications, and I'm also an alumni. And Dave, I can call him Dave, because we went to high school together. I'm your constituent as well, in this matter. And I am not gonna be at the board meeting, and I'm not gonna be at the constituency meeting on November seventeenth, because I am not a delegate. And so, this is my, so this is my shot to tell you what I think, both as a former city manager, and as Seventh-day Adventist, as a member of the church for this region. In the years that I spent serving the city of Tacoma Park, I saw Adventism at its best and at its worst. At its best with the college, and at its worst with the healthcare system. And the history with healthcare in this community goes back a long way. And you just heard former council member Lynn Bradley talk about the sand, and how it was demolished and bashed in the Christmas Eve. People have long memories. And I don't think that anybody in this community would want to see Adventist healthcare hegemony increased in terms of taking over another sister institution. And people have wondered about my ascribing certain motivations to Adventist healthcare, when Randall has told me that the request was made of Adventist healthcare to present a proposal. And I understand that, and I appreciate that. But I know the history for this place, and what it's been, and how Adventist healthcare officials have dissed this community over and over and over again. And so, my reaction to this issue, some may say, is overreacting. But when I saw the headline in the Gazette, and the spokesperson for Adventist healthcare saying, "Well, you know, if we take it over, we'd have to figure out what we're gonna do about a move," red flags all over the place for me on that. Because both as a public official here, having lived through some of the attitudes, and experienced Leland Memorial Hospital closing, Hadley being sold, and then the attitude shifting when those smaller hospitals were gone, to all of a sudden, Washington Adventist Hospital is a stepchild. How did that happen? I'm saying in my brain, "How did it happen?" Well, you know, I guess Leland and Hadley are no longer there, so all of a sudden, Shored Grove becomes the premier hospital, and Washington Adventist is serving the folks in lower Montgomery County. So, it's a concern that I have seen from history with this community. And the relationship with the college has been typically very good, and with the hospital, not so good. So, when you try to merge the two, when you hear that healthcare is gonna possibly take over the college, and you hear that the college's land is much more valuable than the hospital's small piece, and you put the two together, you say, "Well, is what I'm seeing really what I'm seeing, possibly? Is that gonna play out here in this setting?" And the answer is, for those in the community, we don't want to see that happen. And as an Adventist, I don't want to see that happen. And, you know, and hearing the reaction from people in the community, and realizing that this is moving forward on a fast track, I thought, quite frankly, that the commissioner was dead, that the whole thing was gonna be shelved when Harold Lee retired, to be blunt. That didn't happen. That was my expectation. That was my communication with some of the council members here. "Well, we, you know, this is not gonna come up until November, we got time." No, not true. And when I hear that, you know, you got the president of the Student Association here this evening, who may or may not speak, but when I get feedback from the college students are thinking about, depending upon what happens on Wednesday, and how you vote, that they may picket. So, I'm thinking, they're gonna, you know, students of Columbia Union College might demonstrate? Wow. And as a public, former public official, I'm thinking, "Oh, well, then I know what Barb Matthews is gonna be doing. She's now picking up the phone, calling the police chief, and saying, you know, "We got a little demonstration over there, make sure that everybody behaves themselves." All of a sudden, it does become a city matter again, because the police will have to be there to make sure that people behave themselves. So, it's all kind of intertwined in my brain. And so, what you do on Wednesday is gonna be critical to the students, to this community, to me as alumni, and to the constituency, obviously, who are supporting this college. The final thing I'd like to say, that as a member of the Alumni Association, it is my intent to put forward my best effort to support the college, to be there, to raise the kind of money, to increase the endowment, so that we don't have to go through this again, and again, and again. Thanks, Kathy, for the time.
Well, thank you. It's good to see you again. Anyone else?
My name is Melvin Roberts. I live on 7308 New Hampshire Avenue, part of Ward Six. I'm also a faculty member at Columbia Union College, and have been there for about twelve or thirteen years. I sort of, my comments, why I want to talk, and I'll try and keep them brief, is to try and address the concerns of the neighbors about the short and sudden surprising timeframe. I would like to propose that the timeframe for this is ideal for the college. If this had come out six, seven months ago, when we had these nice, long, big discussions, it would have killed our college. It is a tuition-driven school. Our money comes from tuition. Anybody investigating a college to try and plan to attend in the fall will not go to a college who may vote within-- a college who may vote within months to close it down and shift focus and completely change. Our enrollment for this fall would have plummeted, and we would be talking about closing the college immediately, if not laying off huge numbers of people. So while it would be nice in the medical school environment, or in the hospital system, to have these nice, big, long conversations, in a college tuition setting, you can't do that. You don't have the luxury to have conversations. You've gotta look at this problem, address it quickly, get it over with, one way or the other, so that it's not gonna have a negative impact on the, on the enrollment of the college. So I applaud the administration for doing that.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this issue?
My name is Barry Casey, eighty-two oh six Greenwood Avenue, and I'm a teacher at the college as well. I've been there for twenty-five years. When I was in college in California, I spent a year at one of our colleges in England. And I had a teacher who was a teacher here at Columbia Union College, and he went over there for a year. His name is Bob Zamora, dynamic teacher. And there were a number of students from Columbia Union College who'd taken a year to go to Newbold College in England. And I met them. And between them and Bob Zamora, I got an impression of this college. That was many years ago now, nineteen-seventy-two. And my intent at the time was to finish my degree in California in religion and journalism, and someday, when I grew up, to be a teacher here at Columbia Union College. And that's what happened. I went to grad school, I graduated, I came out here, I interviewed, I got a job, I've been here since eighty-one. So I've been a citizen of this community and a teacher at the college for some twenty-five years now. I'm also the faculty sponsor for Taste of Tacoma, something that was started by our students. So I've seen something of the struggles over the years of the college, and my focus has been primarily on the college, and not so much on the city, until I began to work with Taste of Tacoma and understood, you know, in a better way, how rich this town is. When I first came here, I thought that this place was kind of like Berkeley. And since I grew up not too far from Berkeley, I thought that was pretty cool. I still think this is a wonderful town. And I think that I can speak for some of us at the college, that we certainly don't want to leave. That is not our intent. We wanna stay here, be part of this community, be a liberal, four-year college for another hundred years. So that's not our intent. On the other hand, we do feel like events are rushing, you know, beyond our control in some ways, and yet I agree with Dr. Roberts, that had these discussions come out earlier, our enrollment this fall would have plummeted and, and we'd be in big trouble. As it is, if the Adventist healthcare plan goes forward, then we will see all of our students who are presently there through to graduation, so we're talking about three, maybe four years at the most, before something drastic happens. That's as I understand it. I'm a faculty rep on the board, so I'll be at the board meeting on Wednesday. And I can tell you that discussions we've had in classes, my impression is that the students very much want the college to stay, that they're proud of it, even though students have discussions and problems at times with colleges, everybody knows that. And I hope that Joey will take an opportunity to speak tonight, our SA president. But our intent is to be very much a part of this community, and to offer our assets, our talents, our energy, our creativity to this community. I'd like to ask you all for some money, but I know that's not possible. But just, okay, maybe I don't know all the mechanism, but please give us some money. I, you know, I think that we have so much to offer this town, just as the town has offered us a home for a hundred years, you know. I think that we've got a lot to offer. I'd love to see us have more programs that involve, you know, the community, more fine arts programs, more opportunities for recitals and music and art shows and, and, you know, services and things like that. So I, I just wanna say, I don't have any kind of plan for finances here, just speaking as a faculty member and someone who loves this town, and thinks that this is a great place for students to learn and to grow, that we very much wanna be part of this community for a long time to come. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. Joseph Kruger, eighty-six oh one Flower Avenue. And I'm also the Student Association President at Columbia Union College. Raise this up just a little bit, so I don't have to bend my neck. Just wanna thank the city council for, for this discussion tonight, and for everyone who's shown up here. Because I think that, as some of my fellow community members were saying before, that discussion is needed. And in this discussion, I want to let you know that there is discussion among the students, and there has been for the past couple of weeks. Like, like some of my fellow community members were saying, that this college has been here, you know, not too long after the start of this city. I see eighteen ninety on the seal back there, you know, fourteen years later, Columbia Union College, even though it didn't have the same name back then, it's still the same institution. What I'm trying to get at here is that there's a history to this college. And that means something to the students, the history of this college. It's been here for a long time. And it has a mission that the students also believe in. And I heard Dr. Wisby, President Wisby, and Elder Whiteley say, Christian education. We value that. And we also value excellence, and we realize that the situation we're in right now is, is a tough one. The students are looking at that as well. And we know that there has to be a change. There has to be something that is different, because obviously, we wouldn't have been in this situation now if, if everything has been going along perfectly. And so, while we're also, while we're looking at the history and we're proud of this school, we want to be more proud of this school. And we believe that the only way that that's gonna happen is that, one, that the school stays here, number one. Number two, that the school remains as it is as far as a liberal arts college. And, and I'll go into that, saying that a lot of students got together and, and we thought, you know what, we know that administration has a vision for this college, and we know that probably alumni has a vision, have a vision for this college. And, you know, maybe the community has a vision for this college as well, I hope so. The students have a vision, and we, we sat down and formulated a statement trying to encompass that vision. And we see five to ten years from now, you know, just giving some numbers, that CUC, Columbia Union College, be a capital of education, offering a broad and diverse, broad and diverse areas of education, and that education being Christian as well in this area. And we believe that, that it should be like that, because myself, I'm a religion and philosophy major, pre-law emphasis, and also an intercollegiate communication major. And I don't believe that, that those, those areas of interest are going to be available in the future if some of these changes take place, if the hospital, Adventist Healthcare, takes over. And, and the students are very concerned about that in particular, because they want, they want this school to have a future that, like I said, we're proud of now, but that we can be even more proud of. And so, we agree with, with the community members, and we agree with the city council and those who are saying that, you know, maybe not, maybe going with the hospital isn't the wisest choice. Because the fact of the matter is, and we're, I'm just gonna tell you what the students think, the students think that if, if the college goes over to the hospital, they think that basically Adventist healthcare is gonna be left up to do whatever it wants, basically. That's what the students are thinking. And so, maybe two, three years from now, they'll decide, you know what, maybe this isn't the best location. Maybe we should sell it off and find a new, new location, some nice, maybe nine-floor building, and just have everything stacked in there, and that'll be the new Columbia Union College. And we don't wanna see that. But we also realize that the college can't keep going how it is, and if we're gonna commit to excellence, and that there's gonna be a future of this college as a liberal arts college, then we need help. And, and that help has to come from somewhere. So if the board does decide to keep it as a liberal arts college, then, then we, we see that we're gonna have to have help from, of course, the Adventist community, we're gonna have to have help from our alumni, and we're gonna have to have help from your community, and communities surrounding. And so, if I think the community would like to see the college stay here, I've heard that they, I've heard all of you say there's a commitment to help our college. But I, I wanna, I wanna ask that you also make that commitment more personal, that you wanna help the students who are there at the college right now, and that will be there in the future. Because I believe that there is so much potential for this college, and I believe that it lies in the students. I believe that the students are the ones that have, they have the thinking minds, and they have the ideas and the creative ways, you know, like you were talking about before, that we need to look at and discuss. And they're the ones that are gonna come up with, with programs or events such as Taste of Tacoma, like they have done in the past. They're gonna help out with the, the film series. There are so many ideas that are there with the students, but they don't feel like anyone can hear those ideas, and they don't feel like they have a, a place to put those ideas. And they won't have a place if, in the future, we decide to go with this liberal arts program, but yet, after that decision is made, nobody helps. So basically, my job is to motivate the students to say, you know what, let's, let's tell them what we want, let's tell them what we care about, let's tell them that we want it to stay how it is, we want these programs, we want them to keep training moral leaders for the future in a broad, broad, a broad range of areas, so that we can have people working on Capitol Hill, we can have people working in the media, we can have people working in different places to be leaders in their communities. But I cannot convince them of that, and I cannot motivate them to do that, if they don't believe that they have the support for their, their ideas and their talents at the school. So what I'm asking the city, and also what I'm asking the administration, and what I'm asking the board members, is to give them that support and tell them, you know what, we're gonna listen to your ideas, we're gonna come up with creative ways, not just for the school to come up with things that'll give the, give the school a future, but for the students personally, to take the initiative and to come up with programs and have student-led programs. Because you know what, if you look at any school out there, any successful school, any school that has a name for itself, where do they get their name? Where, where, how do people know about them? It's because they're students. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that thoughtful statement. Is there anyone else that would like to add anything?
Mayor Porter, I just, again, I think tonight I've been reminded numerous times with faculty, and now with what Joey has said, how blessed we truly are at Columbia Union College. And as you know, I've stood before this council, we have shown you all of our plans, our commitments, you know our strategic plan, it is to stay in Tacoma Park. And so, as the board, as the college continues to work through these things, we do look forward to asking for your continued support and for your continued help. In particular, there will be things that the city council will be able to do in the future, as you help us develop our campus for Joey, for all of his fellow students, because we really must meet the needs of today's learners. And that's something that I know our board is deeply committed to, certainly the faculty, the staff, administration are all committed to those things. And your support to help us do that, and I think it's, it's true, what we heard earlier this evening, the assets of this community are most significant. When I just look up and down my street, on Carroll Avenue, my neighbors, they're all deeply committed and very successful individuals, and there are opportunities for us to find new ways to utilize all of those assets. So we do ask for your continued help, and we look forward to your support.
Well, thank you, and thank you to everyone who came. I appreciate particularly the comments that were made by the faculty and the student who spoke. We do very much wanna work with the college, both in individual ways and also in institutional ways. And I just wanted to reiterate the point that was made by a number of my colleagues, that the concern that we have is not about the relationship between the college and the community. I think, I, I do understand, I appreciate Lynn's comments, who certainly has more history in this than I do, that, that there have been rocky times, but I think we've been working on that recently. I think it's more an issue of a concern about a direction that the college would go that could unintentionally hurt both our, of our, both our community and, and your institution. And that's, that's, I think, the point that we wanted to make, and I certainly feel I can speak on behalf of the entire council in saying that we would be willing to work with you on, in ways that we can assist you in doing what you need to do to remain in the community.
Mayor Porter, I'd just like to add to what Dr. Wisby shared, a deep appreciation for these moments tonight, we could have conversation. I believe that we'd like to do this in the future, no matter what model the board chooses. I want to also thank the Gazette, in the most recent article, they were very fair, very helpful in sharing with the community what we were wrestling with. And as you've heard tonight in passion speeches, and I'm proud of my student body right now, pretty proud of the faculty as well, but especially of young students like Joey, of their deep commitment to improve their self, getting that education to make a difference in this, in this world. And I see Commu- Commu- Columbia College, excuse me, being that kind of school, to continue to educate young men and women like Joey and others. But thank you very much for the time, and if you believe as we do in a, in a higher power, we'll appreciate you talking to that higher power, to who we call our Lord Jesus Christ, as we prepare for this meeting on Wednesday. Thank you very much, Matt.
Well, thank you. And I, and I would agree with the individuals who made the comment that we do need to establish more formal means of communication between the city and the college. I do think that's a need, and, you know, I have been talking to a couple of members of the council about ways that we can accomplish that, and I would like to continue those conversations with the council, and then perhaps talk to you about some of those ideas also. So I appreciate it. We do have one more formality, which is the, the resolution has been moved and seconded, and the council does need to take a vote on it. So I put the resolution for the council for a vote. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
And the resolution passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you to everyone who came and who helped bring this issue to our attention. We are, we are running a bit late at this point, and so I'm gonna suggest to the council that we take a very brief recess right now, and that we come back in a few minutes and take up the remainder of our, take, take up our work session agenda.
I'm bringing to you for consideration a subdivision of 99 Ritchie Avenue. This is a property that's located in the R60 zone, a single-family development. It is not a historic site, and it's essentially adjacent to other single-family developments, and off the rear, it drops off. The property, there's a plan of the property in this agenda item memo, and as you can see, there's an existing building on what would be called Lot A, and a proposed single-family structure to be located on what would be called Lot B. This is being proposed for subdivision, that means that this would go before the planning board. It would not go before the planning board for the actual construction of the house, only for subdivision. The owner proposes to build a house along with permeable paver driveway and turnaround area connecting to the garage on the proposed building. The owner doesn't actually propose to build the building themselves, but for the subdivision process, you do need to put out a site plan that includes the building, the sewer and water connection, stormwater concept, and any hard features on the site. And then, once those are approved by the planning board, that's, any variation from that would then require going back to the planning board. So what's decided at the subdivision level is what would then get built, or what would then be allowed to be built. This is going before the Development Review Committee on Monday. I've attached a series of staff comments that we would like to make, and I would also like to know if you have additional comments or questions regarding this proposed subdivision. Staff comments related mainly to the driveway surface and the location of several very large oaks on the property. And so we would hope that the applicant would consider reducing the area of the driveway surface, so it does not impact the two oaks that are in the middle of the properties. The city arborist has stated that these oaks would suffer from any installation of permeable paving, and would probably need to be removed within seven to eight years, and would be unstable, would be destabilized through the construction process, and should be removed anyways because they would be a hazard. We would also suggest changing the proposed water and sewer paths, so that it's further from the oak at the mid-front of proposed Lot B, and changing the limit of disturbance, because how it's, where it's currently shown, it would affect the properties on the, I'm sorry, it would affect the trees on the adjacent property. And also, to dedicate right-of-way to the city, that's a sort of a standard process of subdivision, is that usually sufficient right-of-way is granted to the city in order to install public features. And in this case, this is an older subdivision. And in this case, this is an older subdivision and it has a very narrow right-of-way. There's sidewalk on one side and that's actually located on the private property. In this case, we'd want to correct that situation and put the sidewalk in the public right-of-way. And then, in the new lot, there is no sidewalk in that area. In the future, when the tree is gone, there's a very large oak in what would then be the right-of-way. We would like to have the possibility to install a sidewalk in that area. And the reason that the right-of-way is shorter on one of the properties than the others is because there is a retaining wall. We would not want the retaining wall to be in the right-of-way. Comments? Questions?
Terry, this is in Ward 4. Did you have any additional information you'd like to bring with you to the council?
Yes. I thank you for the presentation tonight. And we did meet with Stephanie at the Ritchie Citizens Association meeting. A number of the neighbors were there. And everyone was supportive of their plan that was at the meeting. I wanted to ask if, did the city contact the immediate neighbors regarding this plan?
We requested that the developer contact them, but I don't have anything in writing that says that they had contacted the immediate neighbors.
Okay. Because I think it would be important, at least for the resident that is adjacent to that vacant lot right now. And they were at the Ritchie Citizens Association meeting. They did express support, or let's say, did not express concerns about the proposal. But I think that, given their location and the potential for impact, especially when some of the staff comments about the trees along that property, I'm not sure that that was related during the Ritchie Citizens Association meeting. And so, we would want to make sure that they were aware of that so they could comment.
Okay.
Aside from that, I know that the neighborhood, as you said in your comments, were supportive of the tree, you know, desiring the trees be preserved. And I'm not sure in the comments that, whether that's saying that this is going to be, that with the recommendations, the trees are still going to survive? Or if even, given the staff recommendations, it's going to end up having a detrimental effect on those trees?
We would strongly comment to the applicant that they modify their plan at the Development Review Committee meeting at the county. In addition, the removal of the trees would be considered by the city arborist through a different process. And it's been indicated that the removal of such large trees may not be permissible. And so, the applicant is being strongly urged to alter their plan. And that, and there are ways that it could be altered.
So there might be an impervious surface used that might make it a more acceptable plan then?
It's actually the construction and what's been suggested is reducing the area of the driveway and the parking and possibly shifting the garage to the other side or eliminating the garage.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
In terms of looking at proposed subdivisions like this, my main concern would be about altering the current nature of the neighborhood. And I guess there's two things in this particular case that sort of jumped out at me. One is that this is an extremely large lot. And subdividing it and putting a house between the two existing houses wouldn't make the neighborhood any more dense than it currently is. Because the lot sizes that we're talking about are fairly large lots. And at least from what I can tell, are not out of keeping with the other lots in the neighborhood, at least the ones that are listed here on the little map. You're talking about lot sizes that are similar. But I do share the concern about the trees. You know, this neighborhood is fortunate to have a lot of very mature trees and they really contribute to the neighborhood's feel. And I would be supportive of moving forward with this in such a way that we could have a positive impact on saving the trees. That would be my concern. And I think we're probably in a similar situation in this instance that we've been in with other requests for subdivisions. If we move forward with no comments or with a move for denial, we can't say, you can't deny with conditions, in other words. If we want to put conditions on it, we have to say something about the proposal. And I guess, you know, without hearing more negative from the neighborhood, it doesn't seem like this would have an adverse effect on the neighborhood, except to the extent that it reduced the tree cover, which it looks like there are some very large, mature trees here that certainly you would want to preserve.
At this point, we would not need a resolution.
What? I'm sorry?
At this point, we would not need a resolution. We would like to see if the applicant will alter their design prior to going to the planning board. And then, we would ask her a resolution for the planning board.
Okay. So at this point, you're just looking for comments?
Right. And making sure that you're aware of the subdivision.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts? What is the general feel?
I would say that based on the staff comments, that you're right on target. And hopefully, you can get those negotiated successfully and come back with a plan that supports this.
Is the rest of the council comfortable with that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do appreciate the comments. And just to clarify one question that was asked, that Councilmember Siemens asked. That if the changes were made as the staff recommended, does that mean that the two trees could likely be saved? And I understand the arborist, always when we ask him this question, always says, "Well, you know, trees are living things you can't ever get guarantees." But is it likely that they could be saved?
They would have a much higher chance of survival. And they, currently, it's showing, it's very close to an oak that wouldn't even, that would definitely not be impacted as long as the construction went smoothly.
Okay. Thank you. And the next item is an update on the gateway wayfinding. There were some questions in the comment period that were addressed to this project. Sarah, did you hear the questions during the public comment period?
Yes.
Okay.
During the public comment period, Ms. Baron indicated that the signs that were being proposed were not, have not been reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission or Historic District. The signage that, this is the second phase of a, put in at being a multi-phase project because of the extent of the project itself and the costs associated with it. If you recall, last year, we went through, the council approved the first phase, which was a series of gateway signs and historic district markers. Those were all approved by the city council and approved by the Historic Preservation Commission. We have a historic area work commitment for those. None of the signage that's proposed now will impact on any of the historic districts in the neighborhoods. The exception to that would be the pedestrian kiosks that are proposed for the old Tacoma area and also our maybe historic area work commitments.
So what you're, so if you could just clarify, the issues you're bringing before the council this evening, very specifically?
Very specifically, we're asking you to consider our proposal for the second phase of this project. And that includes the installation of tertiary gateway signs along the, in the neighborhoods that are not part of the historic district. Basically, in Hampshire Avenue corridor, Flower Avenue, Highne Branch.
Okay.
And then, also pedestrian gateway, or excuse me, pedestrian kiosks in the old Tacoma area, up in and in the crossroads area. We have a majority of our foot traffic.
Okay.
And then, we're also looking at the council to give us some direction in terms of the use of the gateway sign system for signs here in the community.
Okay.
Could I have an opportunity to clarify my comment earlier this evening? My comment was not that the HPC and Historic Tacoma did not know about these signs. My comment was that I didn't see where tertiary gateway signs identifying the historic district. I don't see that any of the locations on this map are in areas that are gateways to the historic district. That was my comment.
If I'm understanding correctly, the response from Sarah is that they're not meant to be historic. They're just tertiary gateway. They're not, there's nothing historic about them.
I thought they were to signify the historic district.
That's part of the first phase.
There were, there were tertiary-
But where is that? Where is that?
Yeah, if you look at sign type A5, that clearly is a sign denoting the historic district.
There were several types of tertiary signs, if you remember.
I do remember. I guess what I'm asking is, where are they?
If you look on the-
No, that's not what I'm asking. I'm saying, we've already funded Phase 1 and we still don't see Phase 2.
Oh, you're saying, where are the signs for Phase 1? I believe that the staff, well, go ahead and, you put it on the blue sheet. Go ahead and say it.
Unfortunately, the first phase of the project has taken significantly longer than we thought. We ran into some roadblocks with the state highway administration regarding the breakaway aspects of the gateway signs. And they had some question regarding the size of the lettering. Because of other projects that the planning staff is working on, we frankly just put that project on hold so we could deal with some of the things that had more urgency with them. And we're now in a position to re, to continue discussions with the state highway administration regarding minor revisions that they'd like to make to those signs. And while we're doing that, we're hoping that we can fold in Phase 2 so that we could then have the fabricator go ahead and fabricate the signs that were approved in the Phase 1 as well as what we can accomplish through this second phase.
I believe I said this during the budget discussions, but I'll let people know now if they don't remember that. We need to see these. We can't keep funding a project that we still haven't seen. And we've been funding this for years now. And certainly, the design took a good bit of that time. But then, we tentatively, or hesitantly, funded the first phase of this. And now, I want to see it before I authorize any further phases. I think that it's just not wise for us to proceed until we see the first phase and assess the impact of that and make sure that we're headed in the right direction. If the state highway has some changes they'd like to propose, I hope that you'll bring those to the council so we'll be made aware of what these signs might look like. But Phase 1 is approved, funded, and missing in action. I really do want to see it before I entertain the idea of blessing another phase.
Three of the signs-
You need to pull your, pull your mic down.
I'm sorry. Three of the signs are in Ward 2. One at Elm, one at Larch, and one on Hopwell.
Yes.
Hopwell.
Hopwell. I was going to say, someone should tell me how to pronounce that.
It does look like Hopwell because it's got a blue dot over the E.
Well, I knew the name of the street. I just didn't know how to pronounce it. What are they going to say for the, I mean, obviously, they're not going to say Hillwood Manor. What are they going to say?
If you turn to the third design, the circular signs.
Yeah.
Essentially, what they would do is, we have two options. One, we could go with the circular sign on the post and include designation for the neighborhood or exclude the designation of the neighborhood.
Right. I want to know what the neighborhood designation, not the round sign, but the one, where this one says Hillwood Manor, what would the ones that are there say?
I have to line up my neighborhood map with my other.
Those are all in Sask-.
It would be Sask.
It's going to say the name of the neighborhood association and not the name, it's not going to say like Clay's Wood Manor?
Right now, you can have it say whatever the neighborhood name is or not have a designation of the neighborhood.
So the neighborhood name is the name of the neighborhood association. So on the other side, if we had one, it would say Long Branch Sligo?
If that was appropriate. We had mixed reactions regarding the designation of the neighborhood. Some people would look at it and really like it. Other people were not crazy about it because frankly, there's some areas where it's not really clearly defined what the neighborhood is. The easiest option would be to just do it the City of Tacoma Park logo. So it serves as a visual indicator that you are entering the City of Tacoma Park at that intersection.
There's a great story in one of my planning books, and I can't remember which one it is, but maybe you do. And it's a story about a subdivision in Pasadena and the fight over what they were going to put the name on it because the name designation was worth $50,000 in terms of real estate value. So I think it's important, actually, what we name them.
And again, you have the option of not including the red flag or anything. And frankly, that would be the easiest or the smoothest process.
Interesting. I'll have to give that some thought.
Terry?
Thank you. I'd just like to follow on with Councilmember Clay's discussion. You said that people had different opinions about that. What people, was that staff or community members or who was helping to make-
When we originally started this project, we had a work group that was very instrumental in getting all of the signs, designs approved, with the exception of the tertiary gateway sign. There were some concerns regarding its shape and its size. What we had done at that point in time was to give you an indication of what the size of the sign was in relationship to existing signs that were in the neighborhood. And after some discussion, a decision was made to establish a new sign type specifically for historic district markers. So we went back to the rectangular sign for the historic district. This one is what is being proposed for the tertiary sign, the secondary roads into the community. And prior to any decision being made for that, assuming the council authorizes us to proceed with this phase of the project, we would then contact the neighborhood associations with your help to get some feedback in terms of the design. Do we go ahead and use the circular sign, design that was developed by the firm? Or do we use one of the rectangular signs similar to that that was established for the historic district?
Okay.
Was that more confused?
I understand what you're saying. It concerns me though, if I understand you correctly, we're going to go to the neighborhood associations to say which kind of sign do they want?
We'd like to go to the neighborhood associations because they have not had much involvement in this at all other than the people that were tracking the project online. And a lot of those were from Mr. Berry's ward and along New Hampshire Avenue in terms of people that really wanted some indication that both sides of the street are in Tacoma Park. Those people participated in the discussion basically online or through email or contacting the staff directly, but were not specific members of the work group.
But I thought this council had made a decision as far as what the style of the sign is going to be and everything. And now, you're saying that different neighborhoods could have different signs? We could have round signs in one neighborhood and square signs in another?
No, I'm just talking about soliciting feedback from them so that a final decision could be made by the council that you would have input from your constituents. We would not advocate having different-
I guess I'm on the wrong page here because I thought that we were here tonight to talk about, do we want these signs in these locations? But we're still deciding what our design is for the-
You've approved everything with the exception of the tertiary gateway signs.
But I think we have only two possibilities for design. And that was because we had one for the historic district and one for the round ones.
Okay. Well, let me go on here. I'll change subjects. Okay, I understand that part now, so we're still trying to- Okay, I understand that part now, so we're still trying to decide whether we like round or square. And we're gonna get community involvement to, before we make, before this council makes that decision.
Basically, we're asking you to make two decisions. The primary one is, would you like to proceed with this project and install a tertiary gateway sign as yet undefined, and the pedestrian kiosks, and the signage of the community center, basically where all the colored dots are on there now?
And that's the decision you're asking tonight from-
If we should proceed with doing this. If you authorized us to do that, we would then start the process of talking to the state about finalizing its concerns regarding the gateway signage, discuss with the property owners in the crossroads area primarily the possible locations for the pedestrian kiosks, and then would solicit feedback from the community in terms of the signage, the type of signage. We don't have to go and do that. We could just stay with the rectangular sign that was approved for the Historic Districts, eliminate obviously the reference to the Historic District, but it would be basically-
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Yeah, I'm, I agree with Councilmember Clay that kind of, the way that neighborhoods are designated is, is important, and this is a, I think something that's gonna be longstanding if we nail it into the ground. And so I think this council should be involved in that decision. Seems kind of hokey to me to be putting a neighborhood association name as a, as a neighborhood designation, but that's just my opinion.
And again, it's used as an example. I mean, that, that particular piece does not have to be part of that sign. They're separately fabricated, so you could have just the circle without any-
I mean, it was nice to designate a neighborhood, but possibly, but I, a neighborhood association then carries it to a different level. But let's, let me finish up. I see Mayor Porter's getting nervous down there.
Well, I have actually a question, too, so I'm trying to-
If we could look at the map for a minute. I'm struggling with this map. I'm looking at the map with the pretty colored dots on it, and I see a green dot in the District of Columbia. I wonder if we're erecting a kiosk in the District of Columbia, is what you're suggesting?
We're not actually, the city would not necessarily install, the city would not install a pedestrian kiosk near the metro. We've included in there because that would, it's an area that the Old Tacoma Business Association has expressed interest in having a pedestrian kiosk established there.
And they would be funding it.
And they would be funding that, if that was, if we were able to receive all of the approvals. But I just wanted to give you a true sense of the overall system that we're proposing.
All right, thank you. I, you know, sometimes I sneeze when I am using my mouse, and I thought maybe that got dropped in the wrong spot.
No, it was deliberate, but obviously, you would not be spending City of Tacoma Park money in the district.
Okay. And the other dot, one of the other dots that I was puzzled by is the primary gateway red dot in the middle of Tacoma Park.
That is the community center, and we're looking at using the primary gateway sign type to identify the building, and to use some of the smaller signs to designate where the police department is, where the community learning center, computer learning center and the library are, just to provide people some more direction in terms of how to maneuver the campus, if you will. Right now, there is no specific signage, other than the banner hanging up the building clearly identifies this as the City of Tacoma Park Community Center, Sam Abbott.
I think we've got a couple of, of things that are on the shelf that maybe needs to be included and predate this discussion about the community center sign. I believe Ms. Matthews said that the Lions Club had sent a letter offering to purchase a sign for use at the community center, an undefined proposal at this point, as far as what they were offering to buy, but they were suggesting maybe even an electronic sign for use at the community center. And so it seems that, you know, before we end up with two or three signs around, that we should include a discussion and decide, you know, which sign we want to, to use at the community center. And I believe, you know, I've also heard that maybe the city has previously purchased a sign. I don't know, is that an electronic sign for use at the, at the library?
I'm not sure. I can go back and investigate again, but the LED sign that you're talking about, where you could have scrolling text and stuff, is not included in this area with the zoning ordinance. It's also something that's not endorsed by the Historic Preservation Commission, which may or may not have, may or may not participate in the discussion. So the, the operative sign by the Lions is very generous, but there may be modifications that would have to be placed to do that.
Yeah, I think, we've never seen that, right. We've never seen that letter, but I, based on my discussions with them, I think it was more of a general offer for signage at the community center.
I had sent that letter out some time ago. I'd be happy to resend it, Councilmember Simmons, if you'd like.
Obviously, I didn't read my mail well. All right, I'll-
I had a, have we paid for all the pedestrian kiosks that we would like to put in yet?
You haven't authorized us to acquire any.
That's part of what you're asking us to do, okay? Because I would be, it, it seems to me that the one sign type that there's a fair amount of unanimity on the council about is the pedestrian kiosks, and I think everybody thinks that would be a good idea to do. If, if we're talking about, you know, I certainly wouldn't stand in the way of any neighborhood deciding what it did or didn't want at its own sort of secondary road gateway, but I would be interested in funding all of the pedestrian kiosks before we started in, on any of the tertiary signs, because I really think the pedestrian kiosks are really important. We had also talked about something like a pedestrian kiosk, maybe not exactly that thing, somewhere in this general vicinity of this building, didn't we?
Right, and that's one of the possibilities. The two little yellow dots that are by the red, big red dot that-
They could look like a pedestrian kiosk.
They could be pedestrian kiosks, or in, along those lines in terms of go this direction, or go that way to get into the door.
Well, I mean, I think the idea of having a map at this building, a map of the community at this building, was a good idea. Also, having a map of this building at this building, because I'm often, I'm often confronted with people here in the evening who say, how do I get to? And you say, well, you go down there, through there, the double doors and around there. I mean, if you had a map, you could sort of point them, say, here, this is where you are. You know, one of those maps that says you are here.
Is that a Haitian map, or a-
Well, I, I don't know what it's called.
Is that part of the system?
I think it's a, it's probably-
I'm asking Sarah.
Where's Walter?
Because would that be an interior thing, or an-
Well, I guess I'm proposing that an exterior would be helpful, too. And, and I, the point I'm trying to make is, I would like to suggest to the council that we fund the pedestrian kiosks, all of them, first, and then move on to the other tertiary gateway signs.
I just want to say that the tertiary signs, the neighborhood signs, are, will, will affect traffic commonly in a positive way.
I think the pedestrian kiosk will affect pedestrian traffic in a positive way.
I wasn't suggesting a hierarchy, I was just saying that.
And I guess my question is, there's no pedestrian kiosk anywhere in Ward Five, despite the fact that you've got that, that Carol and, I mean Flower and Piney Branch Corner, which is incredibly heavily trafficked, and yet there are three kiosks between University and New Hampshire.
Actually, I noticed that the dot was missing when I was getting ready for the meeting this evening.
There's a missing dot?
It's just a missing dot.
Where, where's the missing dot located?
At the very tip of Piney Branch and Flower Avenue.
A green, right?
It would be either a green or a gateway sign.
A green or a red.
I hope it's a green sign, as in kiosk sign.
Well, the challenge we've got, and we're trying to work it out with the county, is that they would do the pedestrian kiosks, because the majority of the area up there is not in Tacoma Park.
Well, but if you're in Langley Park, three of the four, well, two of the four corners are outside the city, and I see three, I see three kiosks down there.
Can I, can I ask for maybe some follow-on to this? It, it would help me a lot if I could see, the same way you've listed, under special consideration, the things that were approved last time that we're, we have yet to see, if you would list what you're proposing or asking for approval of, and come back to the council. I'm, I'm also concerned about what Councilmember Clay raised, which is, what will these signs say? I, I see in, in some of the examples you have here, things that, well, the Historic District signs, I'm not sure they're, oh yeah, there they are. So they're the rectangular ones?
Correct.
And then there's these other round with rectangular underneath signs?
That's an option. That's one of the options for tertiary gateway sign for the properties along New Hampshire, Flower and Piney.
But what's, what's gonna happen with the things that we've already approved? Because it, it just seems like there's, there's so many things to process here, and if you could make this much more graphically accurate and, you know, have corresponding lists like you have there for special consideration, that would be very helpful to me. And I feel that when the council talked about it, we would know what we were talking about, we would all be on that same page, and we could say, yes, do this, no, don't do that, whereas right now, I, I'm not sure I could do that.
So you would like maps showing the location of the signs that you've already approved?
No, I would like a picture like that, to, and then the corresponding, like, where, where is that going to be? And maybe it's over here, it's a primary gateway, and so four of them, like that, but just having to flip around papers is part of what's making this complicated, because I'm, I'm assuming things that may not be accurate.
So you're looking for a map that has the location of the sign?
No, I, I didn't ask for a map a single time.
Okay.
Okay? I asked for a listing like this, and I asked for pictures like this, with exactly what the sign looks like and will say, and then a location, where that will go. Not a map. The map, I don't find that helpful. If you, if you want to, you know, help orient us and provide the map, that's great, but what would be really helpful beyond that is this listing of this will go here. Is that okay?
I would, I would agree with Councilmember Austin Lane that it is difficult to distinguish between things that we've already approved and things that are being proposed here. But I also would reiterate that I am more interested in seeing the kiosks than the tertiary signs. But I think that Councilmember Clay made a, a good point. Perhaps what they should stay, instead of having the neighborhood name, there should be the sign under, there should be the city, whatever we want to put in there, and then a little sign underneath that said, please drive carefully, or please drive gently, or something like that. That's the, that is-
Thirty wide speed limit, twenty-five mile per hour.
Couple million dollars, yeah. So-
And, and right now, we've, we've presented on-
We don't shoot anybody.
I mean, one thing we've done, every time we've talked about this, is we've provided a lot of feedback, and I don't know where that's gotten us. The material comes back to us again, and I'm not sure if you need that same feedback. It's just not clear to me what we're going to see on the street and, and whether we approved it or not. I, I'd really appreciate your assistance with making this more clear to me, as, as I'm sure the public would appreciate as well.
I, I think that at this point, I don't get the sense that the council's ready to move forward with this, and so I think something is gonna have to come back to us.
So if I understand correctly, you would like a listing that tells exactly where each of the dots are, which are located, and then the specific sign type with the picture showing what, the red dot, for example, says it's a primary gateway sign, so you want a list that says primary gateway sign with the community center address underneath it. Is that correct?
I'm not micromanaging this. I'm saying that, that I don't quite understand what you're asking for approval of. And so it would be helpful, you know, I'm not gonna look over your shoulder and tell you where to move the mouse and what to click on, but this is helpful, this listing, that's helpful to me. It's clear, I know what we've authorized, I know where they're gonna go, and I know what they're gonna look like. Well, actually, I don't know what they're gonna look like. I don't know what the Historic District tertiary gateway signage is gonna look like. I'm guessing it will look like this, right here, where it says Tacoma Park Historic District, but I don't know. I'm just assuming. So it's that kind of uncertainty that is not helpful in us moving forward on Phase Two.
I think in addition to the, to the issue of not understanding, I think that there's also some question about how much, how much and of what we have in front of us for the council to decide on. That's the, the issue that I would like to be more delineated. In other words, have we purchased all of the kiosk signs, pedestrian kiosk signs? How many of these can we afford in our next go-round? I don't, I'm not sure that it, it's clear what, how many and of what we're, we're talking about okaying.
Right now, it's just a concept in terms of looking at the possibilities, in terms of the placement and location of these particular sign types. What we were hoping to do after this was to go reprice things, see what we could actually get for the money that we have available, make sure that they could be located in the location, or cited in the locations that are proposed, and go back as necessary with the State Highway Administration regarding the concerns that they expressed regarding the gateway signs. So basically, right now, it was primarily to get some feedback from you in terms of, are we on the right page? Do you want to do the tertiary gateway signs regardless of what they look like along New Hampshire Avenue, Flower and Piney Branch? Are you interested in using or installing signage at the community center? Do you support doing the pedestrian kiosks in the Old Tacoma area as well as in the crossroads area, and the Long Branch, Flower and Piney, Long Branch area? Though we can come back with this additional-
Why don't you come back when you've got costs? I didn't hear anybody objecting to the idea of signs in the vicinity of the city buildings, I think we've already agreed to that. We've, we've agreed to some kind of signage.
Right, I'm just not sure whether it's under this program, or whether we want to have a discussion of signage at the community center.
We probably do need to do that.
Right. You know, the Lions Club offer has been on the table for quite some times. It'd be nice to get back there.
Does anyone else have anything else they want to add to this? I think the next step is probably to get the prices, so we know how much and of what we're talking about.
Just as an informational piece, the pricing will vary depending upon the quantities that are awarded, so we may end up with a range, but we'll give you that information.
I would also say that I appreciate the fact that you had, you know, worked on, your group had worked on higher priority issues, and again, I, I think that was appropriate. I think this is a lower priority task.
Okay.
No comment.
The, the next issue is the discussion of the city's Affordable Housing Policy and Action Plan. And you have a fairly detailed report on things, decisions that the council has made, areas where we're working. Is there a presentation or something briefly you'd like to say?
Yes, I, I do have a presentation. In your packet is a status report of some of the major programs and projects for the Affordable Housing Plan, and as well a chart that we put together. The chart shows condo conversions and properties where there has been tenant displacement. Tenant displacement differs from condo conversions in that if a property is being renovated, for instance, or the owner just displaces the tenants for other, for reasons other than condo conversion, it's-
it's considered, you know, under the county tenant displacement law. And so this chart shows the status on properties where there have been condo conversions and tenant displacements. What I'd just like to do is give a brief overview of some of the accomplishments in the Affordable Housing Plan. Program has brought us the most success, I think, in the tenant capacity building program. So with a team-like approach, which includes our housing staff, Sarah and myself included, and two excellent community organizers, Roseanne Look and Mario Prestaldo, a lot of financial support from the county, a number of housing nonprofit organizations that have been interested in acquiring properties in Tacoma Park, and definitely a lot of support from city council. We've been able to retain a number of rental properties in Tacoma Park that we feel would have ended up being market rate condominiums. So I estimate that this team effort has helped save approximately 291 units as affordable rental units. And that can be seen on your chart. For instance, half of the Hampshire Towers complex, 8624 Flower Avenue, 1001, 1003 University Boulevard, and 641 Houston Avenue. There's a potential for possibly 41 more units with a property on Flower Avenue and Ethan Allen. The program has also assisted tenant associations in exercising their rights to purchase when the rental properties are being sold. This has been evidenced by approximately 266 units that are now in the process of being driven by tenant association condo conversions. The first one, as we all know, was 22 Manor Circle, but since then, 717 Seigal Creek Parkway is still currently in the process of being converted to a condominium. And then the other half of Hampshire Towers, which will be called Tacoma Overlook, that has 216 units. So while it is true that affordable condo is seen possibly only by the first buyer, one of the challenges that we still face is how do we keep condominiums affordable for the next buyer? So we're continuing to investigate the concept of land trusts. We attended one training that was sponsored by MHP this past year and hope that we will have continued discussions with the county and other nonprofit organizations on the possibility of developing land trusts in Tacoma Park and in the rest of the county. On the other side of the coin, we have lost over 150 rental units as market rate condos. And this is usually then when there has been no sale of a rental property, but when the owner has decided to convert the property to a condominium, him or herself. Even though we recognize that market rate condos give some opportunity for some people to buy housing in Tacoma Park, they're usually priced between 250 and $325,000, which are not prices that are geared toward our low to moderate income residents. Properties that fall in this category are 116 Lee Avenue, 111 Lee, 407 Tulip Avenue, which was one of the initial properties in Tacoma to convert, 7219 Flower Avenue is a property that was recently converted and is currently selling, 7525 27 Maple Avenue, the green property right here on Maple, that's currently still selling, 7209 Flower, 8320 Roanoke, and possibly 7515 to 21 Maple Avenue. What would make more owners want to keep their rental properties instead of converting? Possibly some of the changes that are being proposed in our rent stabilization code would encourage landlords to continue to rent, adding the utility surcharges so that they do not have to bear the brunt of increased utility costs. Possibly an annual increase that is 100% of the CPI. Those things might encourage owners to continue to maintain and keep their rental properties. Certainly, changes in the market may also encourage people to keep their rental properties when the market becomes overrun with condominium conversions. That may be what's evident right now. Last week, I received a call from a tenant who lives in a six-unit property, and she had gone, the owner of the property had gone through the whole process of registering the condo with the Secretary of State, informing the tenants that they had the opportunity to buy their units, and then giving them a notice to vacate if the property, if they were not interested in buying the individual units. Well, just a couple of weeks ago, the landlord has informed the tenant, the one remaining tenant, that if she wants to stay, she can, because she hasn't been able to sell any of the condos. So there may be a change on the horizon in the selling of the condominiums. Certainly, the prices may have to come down. Just as a reminder as well, the tenant capacity program also works with tenants who are in situations, for instance, a few weeks ago, tenants from 7600 Maple Avenue were asked to come to the building. They have received a petition, hardship petition notification by their landlord, where they are going to be possibly given a 38% increase in the rent. So the capacity building program also gets involved with these tenants and will help this tenant group form an association so that they can participate in the hardship petition process. 7667 Maple Avenue has also filed a hardship petition asking for a 32% rent increase. So again, we have contacted those tenants and we'll be meeting with them this week to help them form an association should they want to participate in the hardship process. Some of the other projects we've worked on this last year, the homebuyer educational program. This year, we have established a new partnership with the Latino Economic Development Corporation, which had been working primarily in DC, but recently opened offices in Luton. So we've contracted with them to perform four first-time homebuyer seminars for our residents. Two will be in English and two in Spanish. And actually, this coming Saturday will be the second seminar, which will be in English. We have found it more cost-effective to have seminars instead of a homebuyer club, which we had last year. Most people are willing to participate in an event that begins and ends in one day instead of carrying it over for a period of months. We also are partnering with Housing and Community Initiatives Corporation, who are planning on having two financial fitness programs. It's been a challenge to get registrants for this program, and actually, I'm a little perplexed as to why, because so much help is needed in terms of helping tenants and just residents to learn how to budget better and to learn how to handle credit. We've been reading in the Post, and we all know that credit cards are, you know, both a hazard and, you know, something that we all use. But credit has gotten out of hand, and what we're finding is that when tenants are presented with opportunities to purchase, that they're finding that they have so many credit issues that need to be resolved, that we're just trying to get tenants and residents interested in getting on top of this situation even before they have an opportunity to purchase. So we're going to continue to try to market these financial fitness programs and hopefully we may be able to get more participants if we go directly into tenant associations themselves. The revolving loan fund, which was set up last year, is now up and running. We developed guidelines for the program and we marketed it to tenant associations. So far, we've received two applications and both were approved. We have $25,000, which was budgeted to this program. And we did apply for a grant through the CDBG program for an additional $25,000, but unfortunately, we were not funded. But we will continue to look for other funding sources to increase the money that's available through the revolving loan fund. The housing tax credit program, our finance office has indicated that more and more residents, senior citizens, disabled, families with limited incomes have been applying for this program. So we continue to market this program. I've been sending out applications to people who have continually called me to get applications. And the deadline, again, is October 31st to apply for a tax credit for this year. The vacant and abandoned property program, we've continued work on this program. We've set up a team in HCD, which includes the director, code enforcement staff, and affordable housing staff. And this year, we helped, we created a survey that will help us assess the exterior conditions of all properties in Tacoma Park. Once that assessment has been completed, we will initiate a program to help residents improve the conditions of their property. I applied for a funding through the CDBG program, and we received $50,000 to initiate a financial assistance program for seniors or families who have disabled persons or who have limited incomes. And if people in these classifications need to improve the exterior of this property, then this year, we're going to be working on the guidelines to set up the program so that we can start that program in 2008. The tenant emergency assistance program, which is still being managed by the Adventist Community Services, is still working very, very hard. We've continued to market this program, and this year so far, we've received donations from the community that totaled $2,870. The Adventist Community Services staff has informed me that their FEMA money has been cut, so more and more, they are relying on donations received from other sources and from the community. So we're going to still work very hard to try to solicit donations from the community to help tenants in need. So what do we know about the trends? It's difficult to assess where the trends are right now. The market is changing. We may be entering a period of time where there will be a slowing down of condominium conversions. I haven't necessarily seen a slowing of the sale of rented properties. So as more and more landlords sell their properties, new owners find themselves with financial burdens. And these financial burdens may make them choose to convert to condominiums, but of course, that will depend on the market and whether condominiums still continue to sell here. Our plans for the future include, first of all, continuing the capacity building program, the tenant capacity building program. We've had so much success with this program. We see it continuing to be a very positive program for tenants in need whenever the buildings are being sold or whenever there are condo conversions. We're going to continue looking at the concept of land trusts and how it can possibly fit in so that we will be able to have affordable condominiums for residents here in Tacoma Park. We want to continue to partner with other housing nonprofits so that they will buy more facilities in Tacoma Park as rental properties are being sold. We've been fortunate enough to have MHP, who was in the market to acquire rental facilities in Tacoma Park, but how long can that continue? Additionally, money available to them from the county and state is limited as well. We need to look at whether Tacoma Park needs to adopt its own tenant displacement law and condo conversion law. My feeling on this is that currently, there is no Tacoma Park law that requires owners to notify the city when tenants are being displaced or when condominium, properties are being converted to condominiums. We could only do that by having our own tenant displacement law and condominium conversion law. Many times, I've had to rely on tenants coming to our office to notify us when they're being displaced and when they've received notices to vacate. If we had our own tenant displacement law, there would be a requirement that tenant, that landlords inform us when this is happening. And we can also have, carve the tenant displacement law and condo law work hand-in-hand with the administrative process that we currently have in place for landlord-tenant law, which would go through a COLTA process when there are complaints. We could also have, you know, when there are complaints in terms of tenant displacement or condo conversion, we could have tenants file complaints directly through the city, which would also go through COLTA. Now, this proposal, this thought, really hasn't been discussed yet with the city attorney, but I feel that it is a need in the city and that it's one that we should investigate. We also would like to continue the effort in the state legislature to change the Maryland condominium laws so that tenants have more of a say when properties are being converted to condominiums, just like they do in DC. We'd like to continue to look for more gap financing for first-time homebuyers, and that means establishing more and more partnerships with our local financial institutions. And then finally, I think, as I mentioned previously, we need to market the financial fitness program in a different way so that we attract more people to programs like this so that they can help improve their credit records and resolve their credit issues before they have an opportunity to purchase in Tacoma Park or wherever they will purchase.
Well, I want to thank you. I think this is a very good plan and gives us a real good sense of where we are. There was comment made at the public comment period that we should be looking farther ahead, and I do want to emphasize that the Affordable Housing Plan is an implementation plan. It's not all of the work that the council has done. We've had a number of discussions about where we wanted to be and, you know, looking down the road. And there's a fair amount of agreement that we want to preserve affordable housing as a way of preserving the diversity in the community. And this is basically a plan for looking at how we do that. I'm a little bit dubious about 30-year plans. I'm involved in the transportation side of putting those together, and they're sometimes helpful in terms of giving you direction, but I don't think anybody actually believes that a 30-year plan is going to exist without alterations for 30 years. If it does, it's probably not going to be any good at the end of that period of time. So I think that this is a very good summary and sort of sense of where we are at the moment. Couple of things, and given the situation that we've been in for the past few years with rapidly rising property values and a real push towards condominium conversion, which has not just been in Tacoma Park, but across the entire area, I think we have done remarkably well at preserving affordable housing. We can point to the units that we've lost, but I think your presentation, where you pointed to the large number of units that we've preserved, is really the way to look at it, given the current situation. And I would credit both our tenant capacity building project, which I think has been very successful, and also our tenants' right of first refusal, which has given the tenants the leverage they needed to use that capacity or to bring in nonprofit groups that were capable of keeping the properties affordable for the indefinite future. And I think we've done a very good job in both of those two things. I would agree with you that one of the areas that we would need to look to in the future is much more on condominium conversion law. I would love to see our city attorney take a look at some of your suggestions on changes in the city's laws, to see what we can legally do to find out more so we get involved in these processes earlier. The other thing, and the council has dealt with this over and over again, and it did- The other thing, and the council has dealt with this over and over again, and it is the hardest piece of this whole plan to try and affect, is to really put an emphasis on providing opportunities for moderate-income prospective homeowners. And the condominium conversion trend is not necessarily all a bad thing because it does provide an opportunity for homeownership, opportunities for people who are moderate income. But you have to sort of get a handle on it and figure out, as you mentioned, how to keep those converted condominiums affordable, which they're not, that they just go out to the market. So I really think that's the, the condominium conversion trend is both a problem, but it's also an opportunity. And I guess I would like to move up, move into the closer future, some of the work on looking at land trusts or similar kinds of things because we really do need to sort of get on top of that trend. The other thing is, I noticed you put in midterm finishing the rent stabilization discussion, and given the way things have gone, I can understand why you think it's midterm. But I really am hoping to get that whole discussion finished by the end of the year. That's my goal. I said this summer, and now I'm saying the end of the year. I think we've got a consultant on board who might be able to help us sort of think of this as a, you know, an overall puzzle rather than trying to put the pieces together. So I'm very hopeful that we will be able to sort of speed up the process. In that connection, I also wanted to point out to the members of the council that, you know, if there are issues that you wanted to add to our affordable housing toolbox, as it were, this is the plan, this is the place to put them in. I mean, rent stabilization has been one of our main methods, but there are other things that we're doing here, and we try and pull those things together as part of the affordable housing plan. So if there are things that you would like to have us discuss as thinking about adding to this, you know, I would be interested in hearing about those, and we can certainly put those on for future discussion as additions to the plan.
Thank you for all the effort that you put into this report. You've clearly been thinking about every single thing the city has and could possibly do to enhance our affordable housing, and I appreciate that. And I also heard a lot of new things that have come up in the last year, some things that came out of the Affordable Housing Forum and other ideas, the $50,000 for supportive services for the seniors. And I think it's great that we're really starting to look at broadening the way that we think about approaching affordable housing beyond just rent stabilization. So I think that's terrific. I think maybe the next time to do this report, I think it'd be great if we could see the component parts that fit under each policy section, to see maybe how well we're doing in each given area. And I also think that because affordable housing is such a complex issue, that we have things that work in favor of one thing but against another, and condo conversions are one of those things. So if you take the first issue, provide affordable homeownership opportunities throughout the city. Right now, a lot of that's actually happening through the tenant's first opportunity to purchase, and a lot of that is happening with condo conversion. But then at the same time, we lose affordable rental housing stock. And so, you know, there's kind of a push and a pull there. So it's a positive in one area, but maybe a loss in another area. And to be really careful then about how we craft our policies in relationship to that. And I guess no secret that I would like us to find a way to address the conflict that we have between using rent stabilization as our principal method for preserving affordable housing and the issue that we have with one of our other goals, which is to improve and maintain our community's existing housing stock. And I think it's clear that there are some conflicts there. And I would like to see us figure out how we're going to address that. I don't know if we're going to address it through the rent stabilization law itself or if we're going to come up with some other support mechanisms to support the maintenance and rehabilitation of some of that housing stock where landlords aren't doing it or people have bought into housing rental situations and they're, you know, they're in bad financial situations, and how do we, how do we solve, go forward and solve this together? So I would like to see us work together more with the various stakeholders that are affected by that. I want to ask about a couple of specific things in the report, but before I do that, I want to say that we have kind of a unique opportunity right now. There's a little hiatus in the housing price swing, if you will. We're in an interesting state. Whether you support or oppose the rent control, you would have to admit that, in fact, because of it, there is a lot of affordable housing and devaluated rental housing that's available on the market. And it is one of the reasons why Montgomery Housing is very interested in the area and one of the reasons, I think, why the county has been willing to put money into the area because there's an opportunity to really capture that at this point. And I would, I would guess, based on numbers that I have seen, that we probably have a couple more years, maybe three years at this point, where we have a sort of a stall in the market, a decline in condo prices. I think we're going to see a drop in condo conversions, and we have a while to kind of cope with that issue probably. And we're going to see a lot of condos on the market, and we're going to see some people who are converting to revert back to rentals because now, actually in the area, we have quite a shortage of rental units. So it'd be interesting to see where that goes and how that is going to play out differently in Tacoma Park because we have a whole different set of regulations. But I think, I see you nodding, Sarah, and there's definitely some unique opportunities, and maybe we should figure out how we could really capitalize on that at this, this moment in time that I think is going to last for a couple of years. So let me throw that out there. And then on page four, it says that we've only lost 180 units over the past four to five years. I thought the previous numbers said 500, so...
Yeah, the 150 that I mentioned is just, say, these are just the owner, this doesn't have anything to do with the selling of the properties. It just has to do with owners selling, selling, you know, the properties that they currently own into condominiums. This doesn't include the statistic when a property has been converted to a condominium and it's been sold. I mean, if we added those two figures together, it would probably equal the, you know, the figure that you're talking about.
Okay. And I have a couple of questions about ones in my board. 7423 to 27, that's the Aspen Court Apartments, 16 units maintained as rental. That's because they were pulled off the market though, right? Not because the tenant association bought them?
Actually, what I'm recording here is that this property, the tenants have received the notice to vacate. They are being displaced.
That's Aspen Court?
Correct.
That's the same one that has the problems with all the mold inside and looks kind of institutional with the big metal corridor doors. It's right up next, it's right up next to Sligo, that's the one? Sligo Creek Parkway? That's new, so that notice is new?
No, that's, I think you're talking about 7411.
When you're coming into the parking area, there's one on the far end and then one closer that's lighter in color.
Yeah.
It's the lighter colored one where they've been displaced.
They've just received that notice?
Right.
Okay.
What had happened with this property is quite, maybe about two or three years ago, the owner had given the tenants the opportunity to purchase.
Right. And then backed out of the sale?
Right.
Came up with like a $1.2 million offer or something like that?
Correct. So that was no longer issued. There, little by little, that property is now really half-occupied.
Yes. And I understand it's a health hazard for people who still live there?
Gladly, that the tenants have received the notice to vacate.
Okay.
Told the tenants that he wants to do some renovation, and so they are, were given their rights under the tenant displacement law, so they have four months to vacate.
Okay. And the other question is 717 Sligo Creek Parkway, 12 units maintained as rentals and then it's pending?
Yeah.
What's the name of that complex? And it's listed as 2003? Is that the?
I'm sorry?
It's listed as this occurred in 2003?
Right. It was...
So they're rentals now and they're converting them to condos?
Their, the tenants did purchase the property and assigned their rights to a developer. The developer is still in the process of renovation.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for all the work that you did on this.
Sure.
If I could just say, I agree with Councilmember Clay about the next couple of years being a unique opportunity, and I would really encourage us to make use of that. I think that's, the timing is, she's correct about that.
Thank you. While you have your report open to the matrix, I would just call your attention to 111 Lee. He had that listed as Ward 2.
It should not be Ward 2.
It should be Ward 4.
4.
Thank you.
We've got Councilmember Clay appropriated one of your documents.
Yeah, I checked with her on that. Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate not only the work you've put into this plan, and I think you have, you have organized things very well. I think you've represented what you've, the direction you've received from this council very well. And I think it's been very helpful to see, you know, all of the different programs that we have in place, and it's nice to get an up-to-date list of those. My, I guess my concern is, as I look at this and I see it as a plan, kind of like the plan the Dutch boy had when he stuck his thumb in the dyke. It was a, this plan addresses our affordable housing crisis in a stopgap way. It doesn't really get to the core issue of identifying what we want to do in a quantified way, how much affordable housing we really want to provide within this city, and how we're going to accomplish that over the long haul. I don't know if the public comment session was 30 years, was it? I don't, 10 years, whatever it was. And that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about some kind of a long-range plan for what do we want and how are we going to be there at the end of that period of time? And again, I reiterate, I don't, this in no way is meant to be a criticism stamp. I think you have done what we have asked you to do. And I also appreciate the diligence that you have used in addressing some of the ongoing fires that have cropped up, or should I say, the leaks in our dam on affordable housing. I remain concerned that as these condominium conversions move forward, there are some low-income residents who are able to benefit from purchasing those units. And we've been successful in bringing in some help from Montgomery County. But I would like, I would like to see us include in this plan some longer-term goals and how we're going to get there. And I think it probably includes more than just rent stabilization. I think it includes more than these various programs that we have in here, which I see as being thumbs in the dyke. I think the world has changed since the rent stabilization laws passed, and I think the county is probably reaching a threshold, or will soon, on how much assistance they can provide to the, to the city in capturing some of these properties that are coming on the market. And I would like us not to wait for the next crack to stick our thumb in, but to try to plan ahead, how we're going to get there. And maybe that includes some of the ideas that Councilmember Clay was suggesting. I don't know. Thank you.
I'll be brief. I mean, I don't think we should underestimate the effectiveness of rent stabilization that we've had in the city. But I think, charged to compare rents in the city to rents outside the city, bear out that it's been more than a thumb, a thumb in the dyke. It's been fairly effective for a very, very large number of people in the city. I agree that we're going to have opportunities to, over the next several years, where we should try to acquire more property or work with nonprofits to acquire more property. And there may be ways for the city to assist in that. And there are probably some earlier discussions that are worth revisiting and how the city can play a role in that. But there's also a role to be played by both the county and the state to continue to provide that assistance. There's no jurisdiction, including Montgomery County, right now, that has an effective affordable housing program. I mean, Terry, you know that as well as I do. I mean, all of, that they've managed to produce in a year can get vanished in this, you know, in the last year, got vanished in the single condo conversions of some of the larger buildings. So it's not like anybody yet has come up with an effective way of preserving large amounts of affordable housing or producing truly affordable housing. I mean, people talk about workforce housing, but that leaves out the people who fall at the levels below, below the qualified for typical workforce housing. And that's going to continue to be a severe challenge for the city and for the county. I was reminded of all this the other day when a couple of teachers at school were talking about what we all made. And they just shared with me that their take-home pay for two weeks' work was on the order of between $1,100 and $1,200. And I'm trying to think about where somebody who works two weeks to make $1,100 or $1,200 is going to find an apartment to rent anywhere around here. You wouldn't qualify by most standards of, you know, income standards, income qualifications to rent a $1,200 or $1,500 apartment in Silver Spring if you're, if you're only taking home $1,100, $1,150 every two weeks. I think that's a real serious challenge, both at the low end, but even for our workforce and the teachers in the county. And there is, as yet, no, no approach which really produces a significant amount of housing. I'm a little bit relieved in some conversations I've had with people in the business community that it's dawned on them that they may have no workers. There is a lot of discussion about, you know, if you upscale everything, for example, in Silver Spring and Wheaton, and you celebrate the revival of all these communities and the upgrading of all the apartments, all of a sudden, everybody who works in any kind of clerical or service industry job, all of a sudden, not only has no place to live here, but there's no place else they can find for them to live in Montgomery County. And employers are concerned about where these workers are going to live and how they're going to get to work and whether, in fact, they'll be able to work here. And so hopefully, as this sinks in a little bit deeper, we will, we will have more people in the community, particularly all aspects of the community, engaged in realizing that this is not a problem of people who are compassionate and want to find places for people to live, but it's a serious problem in terms of how does a community continue to function if the people who work in the community can't afford to live there? And the last comment I'll make is, whatever problems that the city has with the quality of rental housing, I am loathe to put at the doorstep of rent control because you can cross the border to Prince George's County and find serious housing problems. You can cross Flower Avenue and go just go into Montgomery County and find serious housing problems. And you can go anywhere in Montgomery County and find the same kind of problems with the quality of housing where there is no rent control. There is, I remind people, the University of Maryland study said when they compared our housing to housing outside the city, there wasn't a qualitative difference of housing under rent control and housing not under rent control. I mean, the reality is that landlords tend to treat housing that's geared toward lower incomes in a different way than they treat housing that's geared toward higher incomes, whether you've got rent control or whether you don't have rent control. And I think it's, it's more a fundamental issue of making sure that whatever codes we have are enforced, at whatever level, has responsibility for enforcing them. I do thank the staff, I think, for, you know, a good report, and it should be interesting figuring out where to go forward. I agree, there's more to do than, than just rent stabilization, and I do hope we figure out ways to take advantage of the hiatus in the market. ways to take advantage of the hiatus in the market.
Mayor Porter, if I may, I would just like to make sure that the listening audience understands that I agree with Councilmember Elrich. I think that rent stabilization has been a very effective thumb in the dyke, but I think that the economic pressures on the affordable housing dam have grown to the point where we need to continue our leadership in the affordable housing arena by looking at other ideas and looking at the issue in a broader way.
Agreed.
I would certainly welcome any councilmember's thoughts on that. I'm making notes on three things that I think that we, the council needs to do in terms of following up with this and working with staff on it. One is to finish up our discussion on rent stabilization, which I think we're working on. The other is to follow up on the suggestion, follow up on all the suggestions you made, but I picked out a couple in particular. One was to move forward on the condominium, what we can do in terms of affecting condominium law, both within our community and with the state, which I think we need to work on with this, at this next legislative session. And the other one is, I would like to work with Councilmember Clay and anyone else who's interested in coming up with some ideas, and working with the staff, of course, also, coming up with some ideas that we might be able to implement within the next couple of years that could take advantage of this. I think maybe the next step, if you would be available, would be to have myself, you, and anyone else who's interested, sit down with staff and just do a little brainstorming on pulling together maybe something that we could come up with, and then putting it into sort of our planning process. I'm not thinking of something that we would sort of load on you tomorrow. We would have to put it into the overall process that we go through to add things to staff's plate, and if there were resources necessary. But there may be some shorter-term things we could do. I thought the Affordable Housing Seminar was extremely helpful, and maybe there are some things like that that we could do, and if we came up with some longer-term things, we could talk about putting it into staff's work program for, you know, upcoming months. So I would be interested in working with you, working with you and staff, or thinking of some additional ideas on that. It's, this is basically following up on the suggestions you had, but perhaps doing them a little bit sooner. And I know all you need is for us to say, yes, these are all great ideas, and do them all tomorrow, but I'm really not trying to do that. Is there anything else that we should be doing in terms of follow-up? Okay, thank you. And thank you all for this very good report. I appreciate it. The next item is a discussion of proposed changes to the Chapter Six, the Tacoma Park Code, which is the housing code. This is housing except for rent stabilization.
This is housing with, this is the entire chapter, the entire title, with two exceptions. The first is rent stabilization, which is 6.20, I believe, and the other is rental housing licenses and commercial occupancy licenses. You'll be, you've already checked about the rental housing licenses, and you've supported some of the proposed version staff that made. You'll be having an opportunity for your first reading on that one next week, I believe. What we're looking at tonight are just, it's basically a long list of some minor changes that we're, we'll be bringing back to you, but we wanted to kind of give you the heads up. A lot of them are fairly straightforward and on the surface are fairly minor in nature. Basically, just clarifying some of the issues that we've identified as we've worked with the existing ordinance following its re-credification in 2003. It addresses expanding some of the definitions to include language that is used by other regulatory agencies and will facilitate the licensing program. Is that this one that's buzzing?
I thought that was you.
I keep moving it away because it's a strange phrase. Also clarifying some of the language regarding the Tenant Association in terms of their formulation, how current the registration has to be, that's an impact on some of the condominium conversion and tenant opportunity to purchase discussions that Linda's had. Some of the other things that are fairly obvious are there's some state regulations that we should be more in compliance with, so we'll be coming back to you with language, language will bring us back into compliance with state code. We'll also clarify some things that we've been able to address through the city's recommended lease, particularly as it applies to the state's regulations in the states regarding let paint notification for tenants. Right now, that's not a part of our ordinance. The one thing that's a little different than, is a little out of the ordinary, if you will, is that we've had a number of landlords who have contacted our office and said, I'm going to vacate my building and rent it just to Section 8 tenants, which is a wonderful thought, but we're not really happy about that. So we're looking at expanding or limiting the termination, the conditions under which you could terminate a lease, to recognize that that is a possibility out there. From my perspective, it's not necessarily a real possibility, because there are not that many vouchers out there, and it does not necessarily guarantee that the rents would be significantly higher than they are for the current tenant, but that's something that we want to address.
But isn't it clear that they can't get out of rent stabilization just on the proposal to rent to Section 8 tenants? Do they understand that?
They understand that.
Okay.
Whether it's being fully processed or not is a new question. And then, just clarifying the illegality of charging rents and not in compliance with rent stabilization. It's currently a Class A violation, but unless you go to a later section in the city code, you don't really know what that means. And Ken is proposing that we make it more clearly a municipal infraction, you could end up with a fine.
Isn't there a state rule against having a just cause eviction law, though?
These are things that we're going to have to, you're talking about the Section 8?
The issue related to the Section 8, but I thought that we couldn't pass a law to, related to...
You're going to go down to the retaliatory, is that, you're talking about the retali...
I don't, I wouldn't know what it was called. I just know when I came here and I said, you know, can we work on having a just cause eviction law? I was told no, because there's, the state precludes the counties and municipalities from having just cause eviction.
Counties, municipalities.
Just municipalities, okay.
And so these are things that we have to look at, to sort of make some of the issues that we've identified in the last two years, and in an effort to sort of streamline, not streamline the process, but clarify things for the landlords and tenants. And well, this is just the beginning of the discussion, so we'll talk together.
This is, this is coming before us more formally later, but is there any questions or thoughts?
Depending upon the availability of legal counsel, I'd really like to bring this back at the same time the rent stabilization ordinance is considered, so we can kind of package it all together. That may not be possible, and it may not be until after the end of the year, but it will be early soon.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then the final item we have in front of us is the letter, well, it's the issue of a proposal that I received, well, that the, that the local jurisdictions in Montgomery County, the MML members received from Larry Giamo, Mayor of Rockville, of additional, two additional items that he would like to propose at the MML Legislative Conference later this week, and he wanted to know what, what our position would be, and I said I would bring it before the council. In addition to the two MML priorities that are going to be before the, the members of the conference, one is the local government authorization to purchase and operate streetlights, and the other is increased state aid for police protection. He wants to propose municipal government aggregation, opt-out aggregation authority, and municipal government ability to levy development excise taxes. Now, the first one is something that we actually proposed also, so I'm assuming that we wouldn't have any objection to that, but if somebody does, certainly let me know. But the second one is something that actually doesn't affect Tacoma Park, but does affect jurisdictions that have their own taxing excise, that have their own development authority. So I don't know if anybody has a thought about that one.
I'm all in favor of giving it to him.
I would support him, certainly, if he's supporting the opt-out aggregation.
Okay. So if we actually, if we support it both, would anybody have a problem with that? It's going to cause a little bit of a ripple at MML, because it's a sort of a...
An institution that needs a ripple.
It's a, it's a different way of presenting things, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody was comfortable with what we were doing, because I think that probably everybody who's going through the conference that I know of is supportive of this, and I actually have toxic coloring, so I shouldn't say that, but Bruce and I are discussing, we are both comfortable with this, but wanted to just let you all know and give you an opportunity to add anything you'd like to add.
I would rather that they would do the rebates, but since that's not going to happen, I'd be happy to spread those.
I assume we're working on rebates. It's one of those issues that it's going to take more than one iteration before we sort of come to a meeting of the minds, but it's certainly, it's certainly in the process. Okay? If there's nothing else, we're charmed.